Okay, well, welcome everyone. And there's two at the podium. Welcome to tonight's school board meeting. It's Tuesday, March 13th, 2018. It's 6:00. We're in the Sierra Room of the Community Center in Carson City. The school board meeting tonight will consist of two parts. One, the workshop. And the second will be the regular business meeting, which will begin at 7:00. And so with that, we'll start with the flag salute by Mr. Walker.
(Inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, welcome, Mr. Conley and Mr. Sadler. Okay, this first agenda item in the workshop is a roundtable discussion among board members, staff, principals, addressing the following topics. It's progress or update of school improvement plans related to Nevada's school performance framework for the Carson Middle School and Eagle Valley Middle School. And with that, you know, I'm just gonna open it up. What we'd like to know as board members, what's been done differently from last year to make some improvements? And, you know, we'll get into the math and we'll get into the things, but we'll do that. Before we start, Ms. Keane is gonna take us through what all of this is about, you know, the Nevada school performance framework, why, what consists of the star ratings, and then we'll go into some details. So Sue.
And I think we should just start by saying that it's tremendous that you're both four-star schools. So, I mean, that's huge. That's a huge accomplishment. So I think we should start with that. So congratulations.
And thank you. And I'm gonna join in because I had the pleasure today being at the Rotary Club and one of my math teachers was being honored for Rotary Teacher of the Month. But Dr. Przyzinski, since Richard Stokes couldn't be here, Dr. Przyzinski was there to introduce me so I could introduce my teacher. And it was great because in front of them, they said, and CMS and EVMS, mentioned as both, are two of 17 middle schools in the entire state that got the four. And I didn't realize we were two of 17, so I thought that was very cool.
Come and give us an introduction and then we'll go from there.
Okay, so if you take a refer, please, to your middle school performance indicators. I'm gonna take you through a short introduction like we did with the elementary folks so that you know what we're looking at when we're, when the state is evaluating both of our middle schools in order to receive their star rating. The Nevada School Performance Framework Index score is a composite of several performance indicators, which is those budgets, academic achievement, or those bubbles, academic achievement, growth, English language proficiency, opportunity gaps, and student engagement. Each indicator is worth a predetermined amount of points, which you can see in the bubbles. Each performance indicator itself is a composition of multiple factors. So, for example, academic achievement is worth 25 points. It's based on math achievement, ELA proficiency, as well as science proficiency. And they're looking at students that score three or four. For your information, what's going to change for next year, there's only gonna be one change, is that we would cross off the percentage of eighth grade math EOC, the end of course, because that is now not a high-stakes test for the state. It is a district end-of-course test. But for this past year, the four-star rating that they received included the math EOC. But for next year, it won't. The index score is a sum of all the factors that is measured against the star rating criteria. So if you take a look at your packet, just to refresh your memory, if you look on the front page, I've got Carson Middle's example up, you can see where academic achievement is 25 points. On the left side, that shows the number of points that Carson Middle earned. And then when you look at, Mr. Sadler, I didn't add him up today, but when we add him up, you take a look at the points on your back page where it says star rating and what the number is. So the star ratings are between 70 and 80 points, and I should have that memorized. Do you know your total points?
Seventy-one.
Seventy-one. So we're at 71 there. And for Eagle Valley, what were you?
I wanna say 73.
73. We'll do the math here shortly. So you can see that they're in the four-star range, and there's more information about what does that mean on the back. But for your reference, when you're looking at the data, I wanted to make sure that we did a quick review on how to read the expectations. The growth points are for, that's growth over time. It's taking a test, and then the following year, measuring where do the students who took the test the first year, how much do they grow, and measuring that. English language proficiency, it has a composite score of 4.5, and it measures reading, writing, listening, and speaking. The opportunity gap is where we're looking at students who are in the special needs, free and reduced lunch, and English language learners, looking at their reduction in achievement over time. And then student engagement is based on chronic absenteeism. In this particular case, in the state, they count students that have been with the school 30 days or more, and who have been absent 10% or more, which would be 18 days or more in 180-school day. And then the two points, bonus points, is the school climate survey that we are to issue our students each year that is tied to our social workers. So without any further ado, we can turn it over to our principals.
Okay, this is gonna be pretty informal, but very serious. You know, what you're presenting, and like Mike said, you know, you are four-star schools, which is pretty significant in the state. But to, let me just start this off. I look at the proficiency scores, and I do that a lot because different businesses always come and they look at that, like a math and reading, whether it's here or out of state. So with the, let's start with math, of what you're doing differently. And we know that maybe many of the students didn't take the S back because they were taking the end-of, you know, course tests. But what has been done differently to make an improvement in that area?
If I could start with that and just say, well, first, let me just reflect back because I think we tend to celebrate, like, hey, four-star, that's really good. But also, we recognize that we still have a lot of room to grow, and the data points that out as well. So within math specifically, we've been undergoing a transition in curriculum over the last year, and with that, there's a lot of changes in the classroom. When we look at scores year to year, like, we don't get these scores until the school year's already started, you know. So we're already moving through our school improvement plan by the time we even get this data. So it's not that we look at this and say, okay, now we've seen our scores, we're not where we want to be with math, so let's really create some goals specific to math that we're gonna work on, these numbers or those numbers. I think that's really how we used to approach school improvement, and that's what we used to refer to, like, it was like plugging the holes in the dam, you know, like, you plug one and then another one would pop up, and then you'd come up with another finger to put there, and then eventually you went out of fingers. So really, our approach, and I know Mr. Conley is similar in this, has really been to shift our, the culture of our school to a culture of learning. And that's not just lip service. I mean, when we've talked about the learner-centered model and all that we've put in place with the curriculum, the assessments, the learning guides, the instructional practices were probably the last part of that to really shift because we had to get things laid out. But it's also been the most impactful. So I would say, speaking for Carson Middle School, and I don't want to speak for Lee, he'll add to it, but really, our shift specifically with all subjects, but in particular with math, has been to shift our instructional practices based on where our students are. So really making sense of the data that we do have. We do have really good, solid data with our students and their learning, and really making instructional decisions based on that data. That's been actually kind of a challenge for us with math this year because we do have a new system. So, you know, we've adopted Pearson Math, and it's an awesome program. There's really good things about it. It's got some fantastic tools built into technology, and it's a great curriculum. But the data component is a little bit different than what we've been using. So I would say that that's still a bit of a work in progress. But as far as like specific math goals, our shift has really been to meet our students where they are and move them forward. So it's a little bit different than we used to think of school improvement.
Just a question on the math CRT scores. If I'm remembering correctly, the students that were in algebra as eighth graders that took the end-of-course test and had fantastic pass rates, those students did not take the CRT, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and so next year, even though the end-of-course won't be, that won't be shown here, but those students probably will be taking the CRT next year.
They will.
Okay, so that may make a difference in...
They'll be taking it this year.
Of this year, okay. So that may make a difference in how this...
It will definitely make a difference. I think we'll still have room to grow, certainly, looking at where the cut scores are, but it is a significant number. I mean, we have one full teacher allocation of eight periods of algebra in eighth grade, so that's a significant number of students.
You know, and that's the thing, we're not, we're not gonna bang saying, oh, if only those students could have taken the S back, right, the CRT. Because, you know, again, we're not just focusing on just that one group. And I think Dan has it really, he said it very well. It's just been a systems change and kind of a systems outlook and the fact that every, I believe a common language is very, very important. And I think we've been able to, in the district, and I don't think it's been, I think we were lucky enough as middle schools to kind of start the learner-centered model kind of movement. And I think we might have the luxury of being a few years ahead of some of the other schools because we've been doing it now for eight years, essentially, really starting to refine it the last three or four. But in a common language, we're all talking the same language when it comes to, we're all looking at the same type of data, which we really didn't have before. We're all looking at the same learning guides, which our teachers help create. We're looking at the same assessments, so that allows all the teachers to basically look at the same data and compare and contrast and share ideas. And I think that, for me anyway, the biggest, I've said this last few years, one of the biggest bonuses of having curricular changes and finding that common thread of a learner-centered model is, I see a lot of what I call hallway PD amongst my teachers, and it's just teachers, especially in math, I think, because they had to basically create their own resources. They had to create their own curriculum for a number of years with, you know, with the whole change in the math. And because of that, our teachers, they're always talking in the hallway and always sharing ideas. So it's not just those formal PD days, professional development days, it's not just those weekly PLCs, professional learning communities that we have the teachers meet, but they honestly are sharing, it's just kind of become a common way of what they're doing, and their job is to talk all the time, and they're not in isolation. So I think our system has supported teachers in not teaching in isolation, and really the expectation is, data's out there for everybody to see, everybody's helping each other, there are no secrets, and nobody's teaching on an island anymore. And I think at the two middle schools, Dan and I talk a lot about this, that has been key in really pushing our staff to say, keep having those conversations, what about this? What about that? And to try new approaches and to really talk about it and not just think we can do it ourselves because we can't. So just that communication in my mind, and speaking in the common language of curriculum and assessment, has been a huge, huge factor in what we're doing. And that's overall, that's not just math.
As long as you brought the learner-centered model. You know, this is put, yeah, it started with the middle schools, going back a few years. But the whole idea of that learner-centered model is that kids learn differently, different times. So really, the learner-centered approach was to provide hope to all of our students, not just a few. And we, there was a lot, you know, that would come to the end of a semester and didn't make it. And, you know, once you're credit deficient and you start losing confidence in yourself, so that learner-centered model was, is pretty important. But then the actual application for all students. And when you mentioned the learning guides, I mean, overall, we got data, we have the curriculum in place, but the learning guides, to me, and I've talked to kids and I've talked to different teachers, the learning guides, it's a tool for life because you're asking, you know, what are my goals? What are the essential questions, and how do I assess myself? And they can use that in life for opportunities and any obstacles they face. It's an actual lifelong tool. And my question, you know, in talking to the kids, are the teachers really using these learning guides? Because we're talking three-week increments. If we're not doing well at the end of three weeks, we've got a support team, you know, to get in and help you get through. And then if there's students who want more, there's, you can go more because you've got mastery in this, in this three-week unit. But my question is, you know, are they used in every class? I know you mentioned them. And if so, how do you monitor them? And, because I've asked some of the students, they get excited because they really get engaged at an early time with these learning guides, and others say, no, the teacher says, yeah, here it is, or, you know, we're required to do it, but really not, not there. So how do you, as principals, you know, monitor it and make sure, remember, we're coming back, providing hope for all kids through this learner-centered model?
It's funny that you mention, I just wrote down NCLB, remember when that came up? And I think the idea was good. I really do see some benefits of NCLB. It made us look at our practices and really say, are we really serving every kid? So if nothing else, that was good from it. Dan and I have talked about this again, and we'd be lying and fooling ourselves if we said every single teacher used the learning guide in the manner at the level in which we would like them to. They don't. I mean, you've got your spectrum of teachers, you know, you've got those that use it religiously, the kids know it, you walk in, you know, when you walk in, it's funny, when a principal walks in the room, the kids automatically straighten up a little bit more, the teachers kind of straighten up a little bit more. And so we know, you know, that they're gonna really, you know, kind of be on their A-game for the most part when we walk in, but you can tell when you walk into a classroom, those teachers and those students that use it on a regular basis. You can tell those that don't. But I think what we've been able to do is, through our support systems, so through our department chairs, through our Nevada Ready 21 folks that we have, through our implementation specialists, through us, we can then support those teachers and really, I hate to say it, but put a little friendly pressure on them to utilize those things, you know, a bit more. Again, knowing what the common language is and knowing that the expectation is the same for everybody makes our jobs easier, at least in my mind, to go in and say, this is exactly what we're doing. I know I don't need to tell you this because I know you're aware of it, so let's see how we can support you in really implementing it to its full potential.
I would add a couple things. First, I would agree, you'll hear that a lot tonight, Lee and I collaborate a lot weekly, so we're on the same page with a lot of this, and we support much in the same way. But I think we do need to recognize that the use of learning guides can look different as well, because that's important. I have some teachers that get the learning guide out, and they call attention to it with their students, they read through it, it's, you know, it's, they're going through it, the same document at the same time. I have some teachers that have a digital tool, and they get on Chromebook and they pull it up on Google Classroom. Classroom, thank you. I've got some teachers that pull elements of the learning guide out, and they put that on the board, or that's included on what they've put together for their lessons. And so that's something that, when I go in the classroom, probably much like if you've gone in there, like, I'm talking to students and kind of seeing how they make sense of it. Because it's a tool, and it's gonna be a little bit different from teacher to teacher in how they see value in it, but most importantly, how do the students see value in that? That's what I'm really interested in. And so if there's a teacher who's, who's not supporting learning guides, that's a different conversation, and seeing how I can get them to support the use of that tool and find value in it. And I would say with anything that we've been through in this process, it's kind of been that same conversation. I do think that the new teacher evaluation system supports that in a really, it's spelled out very clearly as far as like implementing student metacognition, like using that learning guide. It's a built-in tool for you as a teacher, which is great, that's kind of some bonus points on the evaluation system, but it's also something that's meaningful to students. So teachers find value in that. And I've had very few conversations with, why aren't we supporting learning guides? Teachers are supporting them, so, but it does look different as far as the value of it and the way the tool's being used.
And Ron, maybe just something to, I love these talks because it gets my mind generating even more. And, you know, I try to think, when I was doing this, I was thinking, what are all the things that have led to where we are and where we can go? And of course, until I start talking and hearing everybody else's ideas, I can't fully remember everything. But one thing that Dan says that spurred a thought in me was, with the use of learning guides, and just something I think that we've been able to change or implement, is we do a whole lot of student talk now. We used to not go in and ask students, what are you learning? Why are you learning it? You know, what's the goal in this? What's the value of knowing this? We've been doing that more the last few years where the kids actually, they know, they, you know, we walk in, they're like, oh, man, it's Conley, he didn't come over here and pick on me, is he gonna ask me these questions? But because it's become a regular practice now, and I see their teachers regularly as they're walking around, talking to the kids, and really saying, okay, what did you know? But how do I know that you, you know, really learned this? That's been a huge part, is the student talk. And then I'll pick on, I know Greg Spriggs is one of my, he's a sixth-grade English teacher at my school, so I'll pick on him since he's sitting down there. He uses his learning guide also as a reflective tool, and kids kind of self-assess on, here's where I think I am now, and then towards, and then through the unit, here's how I'm progressing, and at the end of the unit, this is where I believe I am now. So I think there are a lot of good tools that, it's not just a learning guide to say, here's what we're gonna learn, but it's, it's got the reflection built into it, and it almost forces the kids to become more involved in their own learning from the get-go.
And why I say this is a lifelong tool, as kids leave, the K-12, which is foundational, pre-K is foundational for life, and the format's not gonna make a difference, technology, you know, paper, it doesn't matter, it's in their head then. They've, they know as they approach life, they do it right here, and they address that instead of just hit and miss. And that's why, you know, as I watch and talk to the kids, I'm really into the learning guides, as it applies to the learner-centered model, because I think that is the one that's going to, to make it go for all the students, not just for a few. Anyway, I'll turn it over to the board for...
You know, and I just want to say, I think it's great that the teachers are able to actually use that in a way that's gonna complement their teaching style. Because just like there's not only one way to teach a lesson, there's not only one way to use a learning guide. And so I think that allowing teachers the ability to really plan instruction and how they're gonna build that metacognition into it is huge, and I think that the teachers probably really appreciate that.
It's funny, who would have thought? I'm an ex-PE teacher, I did that when I first started. If I could have done what I know now in PE, these kids would really be in good shape. Our, PE isn't just getting the kids moving or playing a game anymore, because even in PE, they use in some form a learning guide. And again, the kids know, here's what my goal is, here's the objective for the day, here's where I want to be, and again, this is how I know if I'm gonna be successful in this. So there are a lot fewer secrets about how a kid is performing now than there ever has been. And Ron, you said earlier, it used to be end of the, I think, semester, a lot of times, kids maybe didn't even know how they were doing. And I don't know if we truly knew exactly how the kids were doing through the semester or why, and I think that's important, why they were doing well or not well. And so now, because we have shorter units, because we don't, just after three weeks when a unit's done, it's not like we close the book and it's done, then those skills are recycled back through, and we revisit those on a regular basis when kids come in, the teachers, and this has become a very common practice, which I think has been a factor as well, a very common practice of a little brain teaser warm-up that takes two, three minutes as the teacher's taking attendance, the kids are doing a warm-up of maybe a past concept, you know, and it's just, again, become a common practice, a common language to do that. And then at the end of the period, teachers saying, okay, now that we've done this, what did you learn, and what are our next steps? So again, kids know a lot quicker of how they're doing rather than waiting sometimes. It used to be a semester.
So it was too late.
Yep. Yeah, and then it's too late, exactly.
I'll share a story because, other than just saying, great job, because I'm from meeting with both of you, and, I mean, it's evident in the numbers and visiting sites and stuff, you guys are both doing a great job at your sites. But we had, one of my son's friends, we were at pizza last week, and he goes to Carson Middle School, and I was asking him what he was learning, and he's telling me, in science, whatever it was. So I pull out my phone, and I get the learning guide out, and I said, oh, well, this one? And he goes, and right away, he's like, no, that was last week. And I look, it's the very next one, but it was like a two-part, two-parter or something, so it was kind of fun. And I went, I went down through the objectives with him, and he, right on it. And it was cool, what I liked about it, though, was, I mean, it was crystal clear in his head, you know, he could see last week's guide or, and knew it was different, but knew that thoroughly, and was, was right on with this one. So I, I thought it was a, just a really cool encapsulation of the whole point of it, you know, that the student is, actually has this awareness of where they are also, and what, where, and the journey that they're going on and where they're trying to get to. And so for a sixth grader, it's tremendous, you know.
First of all, yeah, thank, that's, I love those stories because it kind of really shows how it's working. I love the fact that our kids now, and, you know, I still believe the biggest factor in any kid's success is just a really good teacher and teachers working together. You can throw a new program at things, but unless the teacher does that with fidelity or puts their own style and connects with kids, I don't think you're gonna get the results. So bottom line is, it comes down to the great, great teachers, but the cool thing is, too, is now teachers and kids, if they don't, let's just say they get a 60% on something, that's not done. The kids then can determine, okay, I got a 60, what is it that I have to do? And they converse with the teacher and determine, what do I need to do to master this concept? And again, it's just this big kind of shift in the way we think about the way kids learn, that not all kids, and I think, Ron, you'd mentioned earlier, not all kids learn at the same rate. I've got some sixth graders that they act more like ninth or 10th, and I've got some sixth graders that really act like third or fourth graders. I mean, and their learning styles are different, and when they learn is different, and their maturity is different. So for, to be able to say, you don't have it now, but I know that you don't know it now, we're gonna keep coming back to it so that maybe three or four months down the road, when you know it, we're gonna be able to show you, that, show that you know it and how you know it now. And it's just gonna, just not saying, we're done teaching this, it's over, but that we're always keeping that in mind, that kids are different, and eventually, and maybe with a different approach or with some different information, the kids are eventually gonna get that. And so it, again, it doesn't end a semester, doesn't end a quarter, it doesn't end at three weeks, it's kind of a continual cycle.
And to add to that, I think, you know, all of this is about shifting culture. And that's, that's what we've done over the past several years. We shifted the culture of learning in our schools. And reassessment is one that we didn't have our finger on, like, we didn't know exactly what that looked like early on. When we started this process, we had the post-assessments, end-of-unit assessments, and it was like, oop, when you get there, you're, that kind of sticks. And we've really challenged our own thinking in that and saying, you know what, if a student shows that they're at 60% mastery, they still have room to grow, how do we get student buy-in to then say, okay, how can we get those students to create a goal, understand where they need to be, create a goal, do something about it before we even present that reassessment opportunity? So we've had some teachers really become innovative in that process and supporting student learning so that they can get to where they need to get with that student buy-in and understanding of where they are in the process.
So Dan, you had a huge increase in students this year, correct? So... So Dan, you had a huge increase in students this year, correct? So when you're looking at the numbers for next year, what did your staff do to make sure that we continue this momentum with having that much of an influx come in?
Can you ask the second part of that again? I latched onto the first part. Like, yes we, yes, we did.
Just that you have, you have a four-star rating right now, but you have so many new students coming in. Is there a technique or something that your staff is doing to make sure that those kids don't fall into a hole and catch up with where they should be?
It's, it's really not any different, just the numbers are larger, I'll be honest. We were assessing our resources for next year right now to see what we can put in place. Because one of the things that we did this year, in addition to adding a bunch of students, was we changed our schedule. And so the way we use instructional time is a little different. And there's more opportunities for students to take electives this year than there's ever been. We currently have an eight-period rotation. So students get four additional elective opportunities. And the way we balanced that was that we would have enrichment activities for students who don't require interventions and be able to provide interventions for those that do. So that's something in our needs assessment for next year that we kind of have to assess because we know we need to make some changes to make room for all the students. And we have to start there and then kind of build up. But as far as day-to-day instruction in the classroom and the way that the students are supported, I mean, the game plan stays the same. Our teachers are being innovative and trying to be more resourceful for each other within a grade level PLC, so that, you know, hey, let's look at this unit data to see where our students are, and then maybe we can group a little bit differently, even though they're assigned to you as a teacher, let's shift for this lesson and kind of move students around. And I'll take the students that are in the ones and you take the twos and you take the threes. So teachers have been receptive to some, some innovation there. And one thing that we've put in place this year that has, has made a significant difference for some of our student population, but not all yet, and I'll explain why, but is we've done academic teaming so that the students share that core group of teachers, which is really something that if you go back to why we now have middle schools instead of junior highs, it was rooted in that philosophy of building relationships with those students. So we're trying to get back to that. And there were some, some roadblocks for us this year just due to sheer numbers and the way we put our schedule together. But that's something we're addressing next year so that all students are teamed academically with that same core of teachers. Because as we look at putting our school improvement plans together, some of the things we have to share with you that we're moving towards, like, everything's really built on those relationships. Everything that we do is built on those relationships. I was in the educator of the year interviews today, and we have these, as you know, awesome teachers in Carson City. And every single one of those teachers that was in there today that earned that award at their respective sites had a strong story of connecting, connecting with students, connecting with other staff members, connecting with families, like, relationships is at the core of success in education. So that's a huge focus for us moving forward that we're, we're really taking into consideration with those numbers.
And I think one of the things that might be kind of hard for somebody to visualize, if you haven't been through the processes, really how teachers use the data to plan their instruction. So it's not like there's 50 new kids and until we get the achievement data, we have no clue where they are, what, how they're doing, because that's a continuous process in our middle schools. And I think that that's really to be commended also because it's pretty effective.
The other thing is, next year's calendar, we added more PDA days. How do you guys feel about that? And how are you going to use them to keep this momentum going?
I love the fact that we get more, to be honest, because I think it's a consistent thing, you know, and we can plan a little better. We have Ms. Keeman's word that we as sites get to decide what most of these things are going to be. Because I know that the district gets a ton of stuff handed to them, you know, that then it come, you know, rolls downhill. And, but I also know that our district is very good about supporting what we need to do at our individual sites. So we don't have details yet, we're just starting to plan specifically for next year. But some of the things have to do with a lot of what Dan just talked about is establishing relationships with kids, for one thing, and how we can get to know our kids better. I want to share a great little activity that we just did, and I think it was very fruitful at our school, and I plan on doing it more from the beginning next year, is we, this is sad, but, and I hate admitting this because it makes me kind of look bad, but I mean, it, it happens. I'm walking down the hall the other day and I look at a kid, and I always say, good morning, I always smile. But I go by, I'm like, hey, good morning, how are you? Oh, good, Mr. Conley. And I'm thinking, I don't know this kid's name. I don't even know if he looks familiar. I don't know if he's new. I don't know if he's just been one of those quiet kids, has been kind of in the corner. And I thought, this is not right. Because again, getting to know the kids and having a connection for those kids at school is what is going to bring kids to school. If they want to come to school, they're going to come, they're going to do better. I firmly believe in that. So we had an activity where we had every staff member, classified, certified, cooks, custodians, front office staff, every teacher, parapro, they came in. I basically called it a connect the dot activity. And we had every single kid listed with their picture. And we said, put a dot by the kids. We had two lines for each kid, positive or not so positive. What kind of interaction? And not just interaction, but kind of relationship do you have? And we said, only put a positive down if you truly, truly, truly know that kid and know something about them or about their family or they come to you with, you know, questions or concerns or they like just chatting with you every morning. And then those kids, that maybe it's more of a negative, every time you see the kid, you're saying, slow down, quit running on the hall, or tuck in your SSA, or you know, it's not a positive thing, or just leave it and don't put anything down. And we came up with about 120 kids who, the positives, great, those kids are good, they've got connections. Even the negatives, depending on the kid, we are already dealing with a lot of those kids, you know, and trying to get them more involved in a positive fashion. And thank goodness, there wasn't a lot of those. But what struck me was a number of no mark kids, they were the gray kids, they didn't have a positive or a negative. And I thought, there's about 120 kids at our school that don't have some sort of connection. And I thought, that we need to do something about. So we were able to, basically every certified teacher, certified person, and our classified, a lot of them, the teachers each have two kids that are assigned to them, that they're going to try to make a specific connection with, and they might, they picked these kids, we had a draft. And they got to draft these kids. And I thought NBA draft and all that coming up, right? And so they got to draft these kids. And these kids now are kind of their projects. I have two kids, Dr. Moulton has kids, you know, everybody in our school has at least one kid that we drafted. And we're just going to try to get to know them better and make that connection stronger with those kids so that nobody is just wallowing or not, just not noticed. It might be a great kid who just does their work, but it's just quiet. But it's like, we want more for that kid than just being a good kid and always doing the right thing and just being quiet and kind of hiding. Yeah, exactly. And I mean, yeah, like me. No, I wasn't like that. But, and so we're going to work on those, long story, sorry to come to in such a long fashion, we're going to use a lot of those days to continue to refine those relationships with kids and talk and make sure that no kids, be that they're new kids or kids that have been at Eagle Valley for years, that they don't fall through the cracks, is one thing. So that, really connecting those kids to the school somehow. We also really plan on continuing to have teachers work together to refine their curriculum, because pretty much everybody's going to have a new curriculum here really quick, if they don't already. So time to work on the curriculum, time to work on the assessments, time to share with each other and implement. And then we're going to try to do, because we have a smaller school and it's not as easy for us to do the teaming concept, but I like that teaming concept, we're going to try to implement more cross-curricular planning and vertical alignment between sixth, seventh, and eighth grade as well. Because right now, those are kind of separate at my school. So just off the top of my head, those are just some of the ideas that we have.
And I can typically go back to your initial question. I would say, we're really excited about some onsite PD next year. And we've, we've had early release days for a couple of years now. And sometimes we have to forfeit that time because we need to get, you know, like both schools together and they're doing some curricular work. And then we only have a small portion of our staff available. And we make it meaningful, but we're really excited going into next year to know that we have that time back to our staff. Because I shared this with AJ in a conversation the other day, I've used this example many times, like, if I go order a cheeseburger, I like it just plain, like the meat, cheese, and the bun. But it, sometimes I want to put jalapenos, and sometimes it's grilled onions and mushrooms, and sometimes you end up with a burger that is big. And if you try to eat that burger, things are going to slide out of one side of it. And when you shove those things back in, some other things are going to slide out of the other side. And they're all good ingredients. And schools kind of operate that way sometimes, that we have all of these initiatives and like by themselves, they're all really good things. But when we try to cram everything together, we get this big mush of a burger, you know, and it still might taste good, but like, I bring it back to that meat, cheese, and bun. Like, I like it simple and I want to know what I'm eating and be able to taste those ingredients. So with professional development next year, we're really specifically focused on three things. We're looking at how we utilize instructional time and supporting that through professional collaboration and modeling, and then really focused on those teaming conversations and building relationships. Because what Lee's identifying with not knowing some student names in the hall, we're pushing 1,200 kids right now. So I've got, I've got a lot of them. Yes, I've got a lot of them. And they're friendly and I'm friendly. And we start building those relationships, you know, every time I identify somebody I don't know, but it's a lot of names, a lot of kiddos.
Well, okay, along with this, let me ask you, the social workers, have they been a big help in your schools? And how, how have they been?
Yeah, I can't say enough good things about our social worker team. They've, they're instrumental in, in any way that we can find to incorporate them into supporting students at our site. They're, I've got three dynamos, they are rock stars. And specifically within our social, social emotional learning, we adopted Lion's Quest as a program. We got a grant last year. So that's something that's new for us. It's a, it's a pretty comprehensive social emotional learning program that our social workers take and filter through and kind of make it adaptable for our teachers. There's a separate curriculum for sixth, seventh, and eighth grade that we, that we get support on. There's probably too many ways to identify just in one conversation here. They're tied to our student behavior, student academics. We call it our M-team and our L-team meetings, like, they're part of those conversations. They're connecting families to resources in the community. They've become integral in our, in our school for sure.
You know, one of the questions we've had as a board is, what's the difference between the role a counselor plays and a social worker? And all of our elementary schools only have social workers now. And so since you both have both positions, maybe just for our clarification, you could explain what difference the roles are playing in your sites?
Yeah. And it's still a work in progress, because a lot of the things that, we didn't used to have social workers. So our counselors had a lot of the things that would be more supporting students and families and academics both. And then as we've added social workers, we've really tried to be clear about who covers what. And so at the middle school level, I can tell you that clearly our counselors and where we want them to be is focused on academics. Not that we don't want them building relationships with students, but we want them really clear about how the students are doing in, in school, how they're supporting, how they're communicating, everything that's tied to academics. So more towards like a high school prepared and that they have a clear academic plan that the councils are aware of, the students are aware of, and the parents are aware of. We've run into some, some muddy waters from time to time because we don't have counselors at the elementary school, because there will be some initiatives where the social workers are all asked to cover something. Because it's not available at the elementary, it makes sense. Doesn't necessarily make sense for us. So we have some, some communication gaps in that sometimes when they're given some marching orders to do certain things. But our staff has handled it very professionally and we know it's all about supporting students. And so it's really just about communication at that point. But to draw a line in the sand, so to speak, it would be anything academic, we're going to really push over here with counseling and anything that's not, not academic, but is a support for students and families, we would seek assistance with our social workers.
And our social workers, I don't know if you, everybody knows this, they meet with every single kid and make an academic plan. So I mean, those kids know exactly what they're doing, what their grades are, you know, they, they kind of counsel with them, I guess, you know, to say, why aren't your grades better?
You meant to say your counselors.
Or counselors, sorry, thank you. The counselors, thank you. The counselors also, mine run a lot of social groups as well. And I think that is a very positive thing because they get to know their kids that way. It's not just academics. We only have the one social worker, and it makes sense because of numbers. Our social worker has really taken on the role of working with the families, not just the kid, but the ones that we can't go in depth with, with the counselors in their role. They can't, you know, spend a whole lot of time with any specific family because they have to work with all the kids. So our social worker has been able to work specifically more with, again, the family dynamics and what the family can do to help support the kid and not just necessarily the kid. And we've really tried to focus on that, just those super, super needy families and hooking them up with the right resources, being available to even have parents come in and the social worker works with the parents and the kids onsite. Something that, I will say, and I hope AJ and Ms. Keeman, Mr. Stokes don't kill me for saying that, well, and Jose's over there because he's the staffing guy. I will say, being from the elementary level originally, I saw the value in counselors at the elementary level. And I know with all the budget cuts that we had to do back in however long it's been now in '08, one of the things that we had to unfortunately get rid of was counselors at the elementary level. I will tell you, I have seen a difference in the lack of social skills, unfortunately, with kids coming up nowadays into middle school. They don't know how to handle conflict very well or as well as they used to. And I will say, I, I really do think the elementary counselors did a good job of teaching them social skills and conflict resolution skills. And I think if I had, you know, the big budget and I had all the money I could use, that's something that I might consider, I know, that's something I might consider bringing back is at the elementary level, again, I think the combination of a social worker and the counselor is a wonderful, wonderful thing. And I just see the value and maybe some things that are missing now that the counselors have gone, that we're starting to see some patterns in some of our kids. They just, they, they have a little more difficult, we, seems like there's just more drama now than there has been in the past. And I know it's social media, and I know it's this and that, but I just, the kids don't know how to handle that conflict or how to, you know, be a part of the solution rather than just kind of giving up or doing nothing about it.
One more thing on the social workers that I just have to highlight is that we have more clubs and activities taking place at Carson Middle School now than we've ever had that I'm aware of. I know when I started there, we had chess club and I think that was about it, beyond, you know, being in band or something and athletics. And you can go in any hallway right now, sixth, seventh, or eighth grade, like at lunchtime, and there are classrooms that are open, not just to support academics, but like there's clubs and activities. And our social workers have really supported that as well. They've done a fantastic job. And there's a strong component in all of that with that, building that relationship with students. I mean, that's at the heart of everything that we're doing right now. So if you get a chance to stop by Carson Middle School at lunchtime, come, come find us and we'll show you some of the cool stuff that those clubs are doing.
How about Friday with the Bring Your Hero to Lunch Day?
Friday, that's a good plug. Thank you very much. Yes.
You're talking about student engagement. How about the family engagement? Have you, and, you know, without the elementary school counselors, there could be a lot of, you know, things going on and agree with you 100%. But let's talk about now, with learner center model, with social workers, we have ISs. Is there more family engagement? Have you noticed that? Are, are families asking more questions? Are they still reluctant to, to participate?
Well, I, I think we have made mistakes in the past with family engagement. And we struggle with family engagement overall in middle schools, not just Eagle Valley, Carson Middle, but just in middle school in general. Now, that being said, we have a very active population within that as well. But, but we often don't know what that means when we even say family engagement. We make some assumptions that we often can't answer ourself and how we want them to be engaged. We've mistaken things like for family engagement in the past, like, well, if they come to our school and they sit in our library and listen to us speak, then they're engaged in learning. And that's not really what we're looking for. And we don't know what they're looking for either. Like, they don't necessarily know how to interact. So I would say this year, we've really started some great conversations and dialogue with their parents. And we're seeing parents be more active on campus in different ways. Our PTAs supported that. They've been fantastic to get some, some different people on campus just so we can have a conversation with them. Our student-led conferences, we've continued to support, and that's something that's really gotten parents more involved in the conversation. And I know they're more useful for some than others, but just getting parents to talk to their student or having the students lead that conversation about what's going on in their academic life and school life is a step in the right direction there. But I, we also were fortunate to have funding for a position that we split between both schools that specifically focused on family engagement. And then she's a bilingual. She's been a great addition to our staff, but that's a new position for us. So we're still kind of charting the course as far as how we can plug into her as a resource and how our parents can plug into her as a resource. And one of the things we're really interested in is hearing from our parents what they would like support on as well. I don't want to just make that assumption like what we, like we have in the past where we think we're plugging them like we have in the past where we think we're plugging them into something because they're there physically, but we, we want to meet their needs better as well.
And what he was saying about, we used to think family engagement, get them to school, they're engaged. For, for me, I think it's a, a matter of giving them the opportunity and the knowledge to be engaged. And that means that it's just engagement at home. I mean, if you can talk with your kid about what they're doing, I mean, if they bring a learning guide, or if you get on, dad gets on phone and looks at a learning guide. Being involved that way is probably more meaningful than coming and sitting and listening for an hour to us drone on about something. But again, I think what Dan said at the very end was very important in the fact that we have an opportunity now, and we're just starting this, to really pull the, the parents to say, here's some ideas of things that you might be interested in, but what is, what are we missing? What are you interested in? And then through our honestly, social workers, counselors, our new parent engagement coordinator to offer those things for parents. And we're even saying, it doesn't necessarily have to be against sitting in the library, but it might even be some videotaped training or, you know, information that they can get online and look at. And it's almost like a little, you know, vignette that they can watch electronically as well. You know, something as simple as how to get on power on Infinite Campus and how to drill down in Infinite Campus and how to look at your kid's specific grades or attendance or behavior. So even simple things like that, all the way to, you know, my kid is really giving me an attitude and I don't know how to make him do his homework at night, or he's coming home late at night. I mean, even stuff like that, that isn't just academic, but that is, you know, the social emotional component of what our kids are going through nowadays as well.
Okay, we're getting near seven o'clock. I just want to just ask any, any in the audience that are listening, would you like to make any comments or ask any questions of our two middle school principals? Seeing none. I'd like to ask one more question and that regards, in regards to the ISs. Are the ISs in their roles in your respective schools actually helping the teachers teach to the standards? I, I say this because some people say, oh, we're going to have to teach to a test. The S-Back note is teaching to the standards. And are the teachers teaching to the standards? And what is the role of the ISs in, in that capacity?
Well, there's a couple of different conversations when we talk about middle school ISs to, just to make sure everybody has the same picture. Number one, like we have IS support the, from ISs that are supporting several different sites. They're stationed at Carson High School and they're more specifically supporting curriculum and assessments for our middle school teachers. So they're definitely connected to that conversation, but not always in the classroom giving specific feedback on what that looks like through instruction. We then both have one coach or instructional coach at IS. I have one, he has one, that's specific to supporting Carson Middle School, Eagle Valley Middle School. And so our IS is really focused on the NEPF and supporting that and looking at how the curriculum is implemented along with that. And with it being, we've got 65 teachers in our building. Like she's really connected with our new hires. We had 12 new teachers come into our school this year. And so she's available to all teachers. And as we work with teachers, we bring her on board into conversation. She's there to support that conversation. She's there as a resource for all of our staff, but very specifically focused on instruction and, and as you're identifying, like getting those standards in. She's not an expert on all areas and cross-checking with standards. She's there to support the teachers within that. But on the backend of it, we have the support from the high school ISs.
And with that, let's face it, most of the ISs are typically our top, some of our top-notch teachers. So you think, well, I'm taking them out of the classroom, is that worth it? The great thing is you can build capacity by supporting other teachers with the expert teachers. So I still see them as expert teachers. And our ISs at both sites have different strengths as well. I mean, they're not all molded out of the same clay. So for example, I've got, I'm just kidding, Wade Greenley is, he used to be a math teacher. So he's got the math background at Carson Middle. He's now my kind of technology implementation specialist. And so he's been able to go in and he's just like, he's like a ferret. I mean, you got to keep up with this guy. And he's excited and he's willing to do anything for you. And I mean, he's just got so much positive energy. He supports and incorporates, supports teachers in incorporating technology into the classroom, how to use it. He troubleshoots with kids. So he works individually with kids as well. And then Daphne, my other one, she's been, again, like Dan was saying, helping with a lot of the new hires. She goes in and with her background as well in math, she has been helping the math teachers, doing some planning and things like that as well. So yeah, and then they also work in conjunction with those ISs that are housed up at the high school as well. So again, I think that also helps establish and try to maintain as much of that common language, like I was talking about before, throughout the schools as well, and then between schools, because they talk to each other as well between the schools.
Well, we're, we're getting near seven o'clock. I would just want to stop and just thank both of you for, for being here tonight.
Yeah, we appreciate it.
And we, and all of us, I think, as a board, thank you for what you do for the kids and for our schools. And we hope you keep, you know, just keep pushing and not...
Well, we're, we're committed to continuous improvement. I mean, that's one thing that, you know, we're growth mindset oriented. And one of the things I wanted to highlight, and I'll be very brief, is that we've really kind of attracted that as a district and like people who are coming to us that want to teach here are, we're well-connected with that vision. Like they want to support students in their learning. And we've had a significant cultural shift over the years. And we, we kind of had to, you know, sometimes to, in order to change things, you got to get out of your comfort zone. And, and our teachers are stepping up and they've done an awesome job. So we're leading the charge in that in our schools, but the teachers are doing the heavy lifting in that. So the, the credit really needs to go to them. They're, they're working their butts off and they're doing a great job. So.
And we're both four-star. We know that we're low four-star and we both know we plan on increasing that. I mean, ideally, we'd love to hit that 80-plus mark. You know, we're 72, 71. We're right there with each other in it. But again, I think if you continue and we don't, we refine what we're doing. And I think that's important. We refine what we do because I think we've got a good system set now. And we don't overload people with more new stuff. I think that's going to be a part of it. But, and I know that the district has been listening to that, which I appreciate. They know that we're just, these poor teachers are, they're hammered and they get tired. And so if we can support them and just refining what we're doing a little bit more and try to keep that communication open, I think it's going to be golden. And I think we're going to increase our scores as well.
Comments from the board?
Thank you, everybody.
Okay. business meeting. We just finished our workshop with the middle school principals. So we'll go on to agenda item number three, and that's the adoption of the agenda as submitted for possible action. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any comment from the public? Seeing, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Agenda item number four, which is the superintendent's report for information only. Ms. Keeman?
March 15th, annual bandarama, the annual bandarama concert will be held at Carson High at seven o'clock. March 22nd is the Choir Palooza Concert at 7:00 PM at the Carson, Carson High School gym. Spring break will occur starting March 26th through April 2nd. School will resume Tuesday, April 3rd. I'd like to announce that the ACT assessment for junior, high school juniors, which measures college and career readiness and, and the access test, which measures reading, writing, listening, and speaking for K-12 English learner students, has been completed. School climate surveys are in session and will be completed before spring break. And then in addition, I would like to introduce Carrie Pryor, who will provide the board an overview of the Elementary Academic Parent Team Project that we are piloting in the elementary school. Carrie Pryor is our district's Professional Learning and Family Engagement Coordinator. She's with us this evening to give you information on academic parent teams and, and to include a special invitation.
So thank you, Carrie Pryor, for the record. And so I took on a new position this year when I left the middle schools as an implementation specialist. And as Sue stated, my new position is the Professional Learning Coordinator, along with parent involvement and family engagement. And so in studying our grants data and surveys, and I know you heard it from the workshop that you had with the middle school principals, we've always rated ourselves self-assessing as well as just in general, a little bit lower with the parent engagement. Parent engagement has always been part of Title I. And now with the Read by Three Grant, parent engagement is included in that. So we've been studying programs that have been successful across the nation. And one of those programs is the APTT or Academic Parent Teacher Teams. The county to the north, Washoe, was kind enough to invite us in this summer to learn about Academic Parent Teacher Teams. It's a program out of WestEd. You have information in your packets. And Washoe County has seven schools that are in years two and three that have been using Academic Parent Teacher Teams, and then also in Clark County. So just real quick, you do have a list in the very back. It's the last item of your packet because I included some research there and you're free to read that on your own. But there's a schedule there for you. And we would love it if you would be able to come by. It's a pilot. There's 29 teachers piloting it. You can see from your schedule that we have participants at all six elementary schools. The largest number participating in the pilot is at Boarderwick Bray. They have nine. We have teachers from K through five, and we also have one special education teacher participating. This schedule is, it falls on the minimum days, the regular elementary school minimum days that would normally be parent teacher conferences or student-led conferences. So the time is listed there along with the date. So you can see like, for example, Brooke Wood, who's at Boarderwick Bray, third grade. If you wanted to attend her APTT, it would be at 12:15 on March 21st and so on. The structure of the APTT, just a real quick overview of why we chose this. The reason why we chose to pilot APTT is, number one, it really changes the partnership that you have with a, with a family. It says to the family that we really want to collaborate and build a relationship around academics. I included for you the purpose and the essential elements. elements. So, it's 75 minutes. It's a 75-minute meeting. All parents in the classroom are there together. So, right there, it just shifts the tone. And then, you can see, there's a welcome and team building. Basically, what that does is that we want to talk about collaboration and relationships. Most of our parents know each other, and if they don't, hopefully this will help them build a network. Then, it talks about the foundational skills. The teachers will be sharing a piece of data. Some of the teachers chose high-frequency words, others chose fluency with facts. And then, they pick two activities that will support the students at home, and then, the parents practice the activities. And then, a piece that we were really driven by was the fact that the parents are going to actually develop a SMART goal for their students based on the data. Yeah. And so, the parents will be quickly given a training on developing SMART goals, and then, they'll develop the goal. And then, the teacher keeps that goal sheet. The parents, well, it's half and half. I didn't include it in your packet, but it looks like this. The bottom goes home with the parents. The top stays with the teacher, because then, we're repeating the cycle in May. That'll be the pilot. They'll hold APTTs again in May and go over the new data. So, I did bring up, so this is what happens. The parents arrive, and they have a folder with their student's name on it. And then, as I mentioned, they have a goal sheet. And then, inside of it, the district was able, through grant funds, to purchase all materials. This one has, like, a pack of cards, a whiteboard marker, and directions for the game and activities. So, we'll be reaching approximately, I think, last time I counted, I had 871 folders. So, that's the number of students that will, because it's, well, 30 teachers, including our special ed teacher. So, quite a large number. Any questions?
Okay, how did you reach out to the parents?
That's a great question. Whoops, that's a good question. So, in your packet, I believe, we included the letter that came from the district. Yeah. And so, the teachers, it was a voluntary pilot. We put out a request for teachers before Christmas vacation. They knew that the district would be sending, that this would be the change. So, if the families were part of this pilot program, they received that letter from the district, as well as the teachers have been sending out each week, special invitations to their families. And then, next week, well, really, it's next week, but Monday, we're going to try to do a mass phone call to the people that have an RSVP, but really, the numbers are looking fantastic.
Demographically, we get a good response then from Latino population?
Yes. And one of the things that's been most challenging to coordinate, West Ed, who's the partnership on this, they have two pieces that they ask the district to do when they pilot. Number one is that we do have to make sure, because by law, that we have translators and interpreters in the classroom. And it's hard to fill that for 75 minutes. So, Dr. Austin has been working with me closely to make sure that we have that covered. And then, as you'll see, the, you know, it's in English and Spanish on both sides. And all the materials, the PowerPoint is translated into Spanish. All the materials are in Spanish. So, that's been a huge burden on Dr. Austin's department to support me, but they've been fantastic. And then, the other piece that West Ed asks that we normally don't do, but because the meeting is only at one time, West Ed asks, when you pilot it, that you provide childcare. And so, we're offering that service. I know, that's also been a little bit of a headache, but we have some great high school students who have volunteered to come to support. And then, we have paraprofessionals who wouldn't have students at that time, because it's minimum days. And so, we'll be putting childcare up in the libraries, the multipurpose room. The specialists at Fremont have agreed to host it in, like, the computer lab and things like that. So, it's really taking a different approach in welcoming families in.
Questions? Comments?
I was just going to say, I think the childcare, having the childcare available is critical, because this is after school, on a minimum day, and it's, for elementary schools, that's one of the biggest hurdles to getting parents there, is what to do with their other young children. So...
Thank you. Yeah, it's one of those things where we're just going to have to see how it goes, and hopefully, we have enough coverage. But we'll learn from day one, and if I have to get more people in for day two, it's okay.
So, you said it's a pilot program. So, where are you looking to go with this?
So, another great question. We will be having parent-focused groups, teacher-focused groups, and student-focused groups, because the two fifth-grade classrooms, so if your schedule allows it, we have two fifth-grade classrooms piloting, because theirs is a little bit different. In Megan Burke's fifth grade at Mark Twain, and then, Mimi Loughlin's fifth grade at Boarderwick Bray, the students will be with their parents. And it'll be different in the sense that the students will be sharing data, rather than, you know, opening their folders and saying, "Oh, I'm proud of this writing piece," or whatnot. They're actually, the teachers are working with them to explain the actual data, so that the students are informed, and then, they'll be setting a goal with their parents. So, to answer your question there, after the May, well, after the March, when I have a focus group with the teachers, the first week of April, but after the May one, we'll have a focus group with parents, teachers, students, the principals, to decide whether or not we will continue this next year, whether we'll adopt it or not.
Questions? Comments?
Thank you. Yeah, we really hope to see you at some of the buildings. It'd be great.
In June, after we go through the focus groups and the pilot, we will probably, we'll bring back a presentation to share how it went.
So, any other information?
I see I reversed my announcements and did that first instead of second. So, I'm done. Thank you.
Okay, let's go on.
Excited.
Agenda item number five, board reports. And we'll start with Pioneer and Carson, if they're here. Just come on up to the table. We'll start with Pioneer.
Thank you, members of the board. We would like to thank Ms. Corley and four PHS students, Taniqua, Williard, Chase Kramer, Sierra Canigie, and Evan Jones for participating in the Career Development Conference in Las Vegas. Students compete in decision-making and public speaking, and attend workshops on networking, interview and employment skills, and financial tips. Congratulations to Ms. Shannon Archer for being Pioneer High School Classified Employee of the Year, and to Mr. Kerry Jordan for representing Pioneer High School as Teacher of the Year. Thank you all for your hard work. Pioneer Ski Club will have a Day on the Mountain this Friday, March 16th. If interested, please see Mr. Corbett for additional details and paperwork. EOC for Writing will take place on Thursday, March 22nd. Please check with your English teacher for details. Mr. Bland will be taking a group of Pioneer students to the Career and Technical Education and HOSA Future Health Professionals Competition in Reno, starting March 19th through March 21st. We would like to wish the entire team good luck. Mr. Lorium will be taking students to Rocksport for another day of indoor climbing training. If interested, please see Mr. Lorium for additional information and paperwork. Thank you. And this concludes the activities, events, and announcements for Pioneer High School.
Thank you. Carson?
So, tomorrow, March 14th, there will be a HOSA meeting at 6:00 PM in the library for the state conference for any kids going to the state conference for HOSA. There will also be the EOC Writing Test, the March 19th through March 20th, and that will be in classroom testing. So, no, like, weekends been taken off of us. So, yeah. And to enjoy spring break. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any comments from the board? Thank you so much for your information. We'll start with Laurel.
Okay, for Carson Middle School, this Thursday, March 15th, from 7:45 to 8:30 AM is Coffee with the Counselors in the library. And then, let me, and then, also, this Friday at Carson Middle School, the PTA is hosting Bring Your Hero to Lunch. And so, you can bring any positive male figure that you would like to bring to lunch. And for Fritsch Elementary School, they will be participating in the Nevada Moves Day next Wednesday, March 21st. And if families would like to participate, they're meeting at the corner of Ormsby and Winnie at 7:45 in the morning and walking to the school. They'll leave at 7:50 after everybody gets there, too. So, that's my report.
Ryan? Okay.
I have some Carson Middle School band info and announcements. This Thursday, it's already been talked about, Bandarama. It's gotten some really good press. Thank you, Dan Davis, putting that out in the newspaper. But Carson Middle School, actually, right after school on Thursday, they've also been invited the same day to the Washoe County Band Festival. So, the Advanced Band is leaving right after school, running up to Washoe County, and performing at 4:00. And then, hopping back in the bus and going straight to Carson High School for the Bandarama. And this is a, this has been a really neat thing the last few years. Washoe County, Carson Middle School is one of only about three schools that have been invited outside of Washoe County to this band festival. So, it's a real tribute to what Mr. Jox is doing over there. And then, the following week, Wednesday, the Jazz Band at Carson Middle School will perform in the Northern Zone Festival at Pawaloo Middle School in Minden. And their performance will, again, they're leaving after school, and their performance that night will be at 6:50 PM. And that's my report.
A couple of items. Fremont Elementary School will have a movie night this Friday, starting at 5:00. And they are also working on a halls and walls makeover at their school. And so, if you had a child that attended Fremont Elementary School between 1998 and 2005 with art on the wall, they would love to reunite your child with his or her artwork. And Boarderwick Bray is, they had their reading night tonight from 5:00 to 6:30, and I hope they had a great turnout and did a lot of great reading. And that concludes my report.
That's so funny. I was at Fremont to do Reading Week and noticed that there was 1996 and 1998. And I was like, wow, we need to update this. But that's good to hear they're doing that. So...
So, we could blame you.
Right. It's my fault. It's always my fault. I'd just like to thank Fritsch, Fremont, and Bray for inviting me to do Reading Week. I always love to be able to read my favorite Dr. Seuss book. And then, thank you to Mr. Story. I got to check being a judge at Mr. Carson High off of my bucket list. That was pretty exciting. And then, I got to tour Fritsch and Pioneer, the new construction, and I think it's coming along really well. It looks really good. Fritsch's carpet's pretty cool. And that's all I have. Or, do you want NASB now, too?
Yes.
Okay. So, we had a conference call with NASB yesterday, and it was longer than we wanted it to be, but there was a lot of good information. Found out about Fund Our Future, which is a new community group that's getting together and getting organized to go to the legislature and hopefully, figure out how we can refund schools, because the Nevada Plan is not working. And they're working with community members, teachers, staff, and they've asked the school boards to come along, and we'll be discussing that more in April. The school safety meeting is April 20th through the 21st workshop. A lot of good speakers coming up with that, and working with Pool Pack. And if anybody has anything that, for the upcoming elections, that you want to put forth to candidates, to ask, like, the Assembly and Senators and all that, to let us know, because we're having our lobbyists put together, or our public policy people, put together a list of questions to ask candidates, so we kind of know where they stand with legislative matters. And then, the only other thing is, as you know, my Region 3 Board of Control for NIAA is up June 30th. And there'll be a letter coming out from Dottie, and it'll be from Douglas, Churchill, and here are the three counties that are in that region. And they'll send it out to all of us. And if you're interested, you'll need to write a letter to Ron, and then, Ron will forward it to NASB, or you will decide if we have more than one person.
Are you interested?
Um, I'm not not interested. I just, if nobody from Carson wants to put their name in the hat, I'll put it in again. But if not, I think it's a great opportunity for somebody to do, because it's really interesting to see the inner workings of the athletics, especially here. And I know Ryan and I and Laurel both participated in high school athletics. So, it was interesting to see it from that aspect. And the other thing from that is that Mr. Bateman from Carson High is being put in the Hall of Fame on March 22nd, and they're having a dinner at Pepper Mill. So, that'll be neat. So, if nobody's going to put in, I'll put in. But if not, I think it's a great opportunity for somebody else.
Okay, and I have two announcements. One, going back to, what, a couple of weeks ago, the Career Expo at the Carson High School. I don't know if any of you attended, but that was just tremendous. Michelle, you know, the hats off to you, to Dick Cale and all that were involved. That was, that was a huge success. And I got to talk to just a number of the businesses. I went there to thank them for, you know, for showing up for the parents and the kids. But also, without exception, they're all committed to helping our students with applied learning, whether it was Panasonic, Hamilton, you know, it was just, it was just business after business that we want to help. And that's a tremendous community coming together to help the kids be successful in life. And they do it while they're in high school. And it was just, it was wonderful to see. The second thing was this past week, the STEAM Night at Eagle Valley Middle School, in STEAM and Science Technology, Engineering, the Arts, and Math. And that, again, Lisa Stucky Coop does such a tremendous job of putting that on. And the parents and students were all, they were all engaged, and they are all ready to go. I mean, we had, I even signed up for a couple of the sustainable energy programs, sustainable energy businesses that are helping the teachers and helping the students that want to learn, after-school programs. So, I said, include me. So, I mean, I'm going to be part of that. But all of the people that want to come forward, and no longer is it only in the classroom, it's in the classroom and beyond. So, I just want to thank Lisa Stucky Coop for, I think this is her sixth year, and it's, it's just it's association reports, and any association reports.
Good evening. President Swirzik, trustees, administration, and Renee. I've always wanted to do that.
She's a virtual.
I know. I have some flyers up here, and it is about our sixth annual CESA banquet that will be held Sunday, May 6th. It's from 5:30 to 8:00 at the Fandango Casino, and some of you have joined us. And during that time, we celebrate the Classified Employee of the Year from all sides. And then, the main winner for our, all the people from, the one person who gets to have the main treat, and scholarship winners, casual dress. And here is an RSVP. It's $15 a person. And it's a really nice time. And we get to mingle with our own people, and it's a really fun time. So, I have these here, and I will leave these here for you guys. And you can RSVP Terry at transportation. And RSVP no later than May 2nd. Okay? Again, the banquet is May 6th. Okay? As you know, we, the Classifieds, have started negotiations, and we just started, finished our non-economic. And during that time, we came up with some value statements. And one of them that is so strong in our hearts is we came up with, classified does not mean second class. And sometimes, we kind of feel that way. But a lot of times, I have experienced a lot of nice people and respect for me. But there's a lot of people who feel that. And so, that was one of our value statements that came out of our little negotiations. And also, something that came out of negotiations was, every time we agreed, we did our Zopa Dance. Right, Dr. Delphine?
You did it well.
We, so every time we agreed, there's, the way it works is, we have our issues, they have their issues. And when we come together, we put it in the zone, which is the Zopa Zone. And we just decided, every time we agreed, we did the Zopa Dance. So, hey, we made it fun. I don't know about the next time, but hey.
It's on YouTube.
Well, it might be on some things from Mr. Kessler. Also, CESA would like to share Also, CESA would like to share our condolences with the certified staff members who have passed this school year. Also, part of that is we have had emails about people passing, and sometimes some of the Classifieds had been not given out. And we would like to ask the district if, from now on sadly, but when we do have any of our personnel who passes, could we all have an email? Johnny Fry passed. Of course, you guys did a silent moment for Joe Salazar. And then a person named Randy Evans had just passed in January. So we would just like the opportunity, if the district could, give out an email for everyone to know who's passed. Sometimes we don't get to talk to one another, and then we go, oh. So that's one of the things that we would like to see done for all employees. All right? So that ends my little fun here. All right? And so I'll leave these here for you guys, too. Hopefully, we'll get to see you.
Okay. Okay, going on to agenda, item number seven. That's public comment, and this is a time for the public to come forward for any item or any subject that's related to schools that is not on the agenda. And don't be bashful, just, you can run, okay. All right, saying none, we'll continue on to agenda item number eight. And that's discussion and possible action to approve the adoption of the 2018 Grade 6 through 12 Science, Technology, Engineering, and Math STEM materials for the Carson City School District as budgeted. And Sue?
If we could have Susan Kima for the record. I just need a moment to set up. I would like the Project Lead the Way team for Carson Middle and Carson High School to come sit at the table. I'm going to stay in my place. We're going to pass out some binders for everybody to see. You, I'll explain the binders in a minute. It is my pleasure to present to you this evening Project Lead the Way, which is recommended for board adoption for 6 through 8 STEM classes and 9 through 12 Engineering and Computerized Manufacturing classes. I will provide you with an overview of tonight's presentation for this agenda item. We will first discuss the 6 through 8 Project Lead the Way STEM project at Carson Middle School. After Shalise Crookshanks, Carson Middle Assistant Principal, talks about the selection process, Kimberly Herter, our guest from Project Lead the Way, and her, another special guest, Shabaka McKee, will talk more or share a visual of what Project Lead the Way looks like. You have binders, but it's really hard to show what Project Leads the Way looks like in a binder because it's a technology-based STEM program. We will repeat the process for Carson High's CTE program led by Michelle Lewis and Candy Ruff. They'll talk about why the high school picked Project Lead the Way. Both committees followed NRS. I'm here to assure you that both committees followed NRS and NAC 390 in the selection process. Since Project Lead the Way is a technology-based program, Shalise Crookshanks and Candy Ruff pulled together binders for the required open public review. It is noted that we did not have anyone come in from the community to provide feedback. If approved tonight, both projects will go to the Nevada State Board of Education for approval on April 26th.
Susan?
I have a question on the time and opportunity for the public review on the...
Middle School, there's a typo on that.
Okay, because it says March 14th and 15th.
Yeah, it should have been written the same way as the high school. There's a typo on that.
Okay, great. Because I don't want to approve something that hasn't yet gone through public.
Right, it has. I won't be sending anything, bringing anything to the board that hasn't already gone through public review. And Ron and I caught that yesterday, so thank you very much. And we'll make that correction before we send this paperwork on to the state. All right. So to start with, Carson Middle School is going through a building renovation, which will build, turn unused space at Carson Middle into STEM labs and classroom space. This construction project will be completed by August 2018 in time for the start of the school year. Project Lead the Way was chosen by a teacher committee led by Shalise Crookshanks. Thank you to Shalise Crookshanks and Valerie Dockery, who applied for a Title IV grant to cover startup materials, equipment, contracts, and professional development costs for the project. The enclosed budget shows, in your packet, there's an enclosed budget, shows that the cost of the project is $189,487.52 for startup. And we did get our letter from the state. And as soon as we have state board approval, because it's a grant, and we can start ordering anytime upon approval. So at this time, I'd like to turn the presentation over to Shalise Crookshanks, Carson Middle Assistant Principal, who will tell you why Project Lead the Way was chosen. Once she's done speaking, again, our special guests from Project Lead the Way, Kimberly Herter and Shabaka McKee, will show you what it really looks like. And then Michelle will take the presentation from there to talk about the high school.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you for having us here today to elaborate on a little bit of what you have in those notebooks and through this formal process. This is the fun part now, where we get to talk about what the kids are going to be doing and what those students are going to be learning while they're in these classes. Project Lead the Way was selected because it is an interactive program. They are able to, the students are guided through a series of experiments, a series of applications, and learning opportunities. For example, in the entry program, it culminates in a big family event night where the students have designed a toy for a child with a disability. And then you come and present that to a panel of family members or community members, however you want to set that up. So this Project Lead the Way not only is based on the science and engineering standards and bringing into that technology as well, it's problem-based learning. And that is a research-based practice from the Buck Institute that we've been learning about as teachers for years. And that's how this curriculum is organized, is through the use of projects for students. Once we have these projects, then we begin to learn about communication skills and interpersonal skills amongst the students and how we conduct ourselves when we agree as well as when we don't disagree. And this aspect was a very strong selling point or selection topic for us because at Carson Middle School, we have a special ed population, and we also have an English language learner population, as well as a gate population. We've got a lot of a variety of students in these classes. And this avenue to solve problems collectively and learn these interpersonal skills while we're still doing science, math, technology, and engineering is very important to us. So we're very excited. The middle school program is called a gateway. So we're basically opening the gates for these young minds to be able to continue the same structure and to be able to continue in some of the same topics as they progress up to the high school. So we are really excited about adding this in for our students. Just briefly, there's three STEM tracks that involve a design and modeling, some flight and space work. There's a robotics component to it. And we're also going to be working in the area of green energy and green architecture, which the district is very excited about because we've done some really significant work in that area as a district. So now we're going to be bringing the students on board with more of that. We've done some of that entry stuff this year with a program that we're using from UNR. And in addition to those three, we have a computer science-focused track, and we also have one that's an introduction to health sciences. So again, we're opening that gate to give the students opportunities that they might want to further as they progress to the high school. So we're really excited about this. I think you guys will prob, I don't know if you want to do questions now for me or at the end, Mrs. Kima or President?
Let me just ask a question here.
Yes, sir.
We're talking about problem-based learning, project-based learning. In your selection, this was the criteria, something that's applied. I mean, not, we have abstract learning, which is, at some point in life, was considered the highest form of learning. But if we don't have applied learning alongside of it, it sometimes gets lost in life. So this is, was that your criteria then to, in looking at Project Lead the Way? Were the, and I haven't read through this, but that was, well, you, maybe I should be asking you, but that was a criteria that, that...
Absolutely. Absolutely. And I appreciate the acknowledgement there that this really is project or problem-based learning, where the students are taking, what we want to do as educators, and everyone in this room knows, is to teach the students the skills that they need. And we want to teach them the standards, and we want to teach them how to read and write and to do math. But when they can take those skills and actually apply them to solve something like each of us do in our daily lives, that is where we put learning to the test. I think it gives relevance to the kids, and that's what we're looking for here, is we're looking for these students to have an avenue to demonstrate learning in a relevant manner. So that, with the problem-based, project-based learning, that was our key criteria here when we selected this program. Yes?
Any other comments or questions before we go forward?
Yes.
Mrs. Kima and I talked about this at the community forum. And I remember I had asked, and I can't remember the answer, is this, so I know we have educators that are going to be trained in this, correct? So it's like a week-long training. Are there consumables or is it we teach the skills and then it's ongoing? Is it every year we have another $100,000 due or is it? And honestly, I apologize, I don't remember what the answer was to that.
So there are consumables. Each module has a different price. Michelle's got that priced out for the high school. And so does Shalise. They could probably tell you better about what that amount is. But it's not this amount of money each year. Once the teacher is trained, the teacher is trained. And our guest, special guest, will be able to probably spell out those details, too. Thank you. Do you want to reply?
I would just add to that, that I appreciate your question about consumables, and that's something like as financially responsible administrators that we're always looking out for. When you get into a core class and you buy a math resource or a textbook, like you get to use that. Our contracts are currently for seven years. You know, you may use that even longer. When you branch into the realm of CTE and you branch into these hands-on types of scenarios, all of them come with consumables. And we've had to work hard at saying, okay, which consumables are most valuable? How can we get the best price? Can we order this one through our warehouse? And so some of the things that you'll see on the initial grant application, like we will be able to provide through our resource or through our warehouse, which will bring the cost of those consumables down. There are some kits that will be purchased each year. But even now, for STEM, for the different programs that I have at the middle school, there's expendables associated with those costs even now.
I have a question on the, one of the areas that it was listed as inadequate for the material available for students with visual impairments. And the note says that it may be adaptable. Is it going to be? Because that can be a real problem if you have someone who needs large print and they don't have access to it, or who needs additional access to material. So has that been, is it may or is it will, I guess, is what I'm wondering?
Well, that's something that, so Project Lead the Way has a very nice member, Resource Center. And it's a community that goes along with this. And when Candy, when we ran across this rubric and we were doing our due diligence to study the things that were there, we actually called them and spoke with them. Do you have any additional information?
I think I have good, probably.
Kim, do you want?
Yeah, I can add. I was just waiting. You're doing such a great job. I was just sitting here thinking like, man, awesome.
Well, I would use our Google tools that we have in our laptops to field that. You know, that's what I was thinking, but let's hear from Shabaka.
Yeah, just to add to your comments there, we do provide...
Excuse me, could you just state your name again for the record?
Sure. My name is Shabaka McKee, and I work for Project Lead the Way. What I would like to add to that is we do provide that for students. We use a platform called Courses, which is a way where you can integrate the curriculum and have access online and offline. And there's that adaptability function for students that are visually impaired.
Just continue.
Okay, thank you. That concludes my portion for the middle school. So I'll pass the torch over here to the high school. But before we do that, we're going to see the little visual application of what it looks like in a middle school setting.
Yeah, before we cue up the video here, my name again is Shabaka McKee with Project Lead the Way. And I would just like to share that my background's in engineering. And when you talk about applied learning, I mean, that's actually what's happening. I have an almost two-year-old daughter. And when I think about the opportunities that students are experiencing through our content that we provide, I'm looking forward for that opportunity. She's already, given the fact that I work for Project Lead the Way, already having that experience because I have a lot of toys at our house. And so she's having that opportunity. And when you really think about the connection or opening that gate, like that was mentioned here earlier, that's what we're really providing, is that opportunity for students to become whatever they decide and having those in-demand transportable skills. So what you're going to see briefly in this video is from one of our curriculum writers. He's going to introduce to you design and modeling, where you'll get a sense of what students are going to experience within the classroom. In addition to this, as you're looking at the video, keep in mind, these are additional resources that we provide to our teachers. So it's one thing to be trained as a Project Lead the Way teacher and then be left there. It's another thing to be trained and continue to have ongoing support. And that's what Project Lead the Way provides.
(interviewing) Developed alongside PLTW teachers, this curriculum focuses on effectively communicating ideas using different types of models. Design and modeling includes concepts of engineering, biomedical sciences, and computer sciences to help students better understand a design problem and obtain skills for developing effective solutions. Expanding the concept of modeling as a means for gathering information and sharing ideas. Design and modeling exposes students to mathematical modeling lead the way, and I'm excited to share with you a new...
Is there a way that I may, I need to slide to another screen?
Design and modeling unit. Developed alongside PLTW...
See if you can. I may need to be...
Do you usually, do you usually like extend the screen? Does that sound familiar?
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to, I see the mouse.
We're developing a marble maze toy where you drop it in the top and you do a crank and then it goes through a maze that comes...
Well, he's, my name is Kimberly Herter, and I work for Project Lead the Way as well. And my background, I've been with Project Lead the Way. Well, I'm just filling, you know, so that, I'm a mom, but I come from a middle school, high school administrative background. Prior to that, I was in the corporate world. And I have, my background is also traveling and having more than one language spoken at home. And the school I came from actually had 350 kids and a hundred...
And I'm excited to share with you a new design and modeling unit. Developed alongside PLTW...
Is the volume okay?
Lead the Way, and I'm excited to share with you a new design and modeling unit. Developed alongside PLTW teachers, this curriculum focuses on effectively communicating ideas using different types of models. Design and modeling includes concepts of engineering, biomedical sciences, and computer Design and modeling includes concepts of engineering, biomedical sciences, and computer sciences to help students better understand a design problem and obtain skills for developing effective solutions. Expanding the concept of modeling as a means for gathering information and sharing ideas. Design and modeling exposes students to mathematical modeling, simulations, and computer-aided design. Students discover the need for accurate sketches and models through lessons that illustrate the power of failure. Learning opportunities encourage students to make mistakes, construct their own understandings, and improve their skills to tackle the unit design problem. In Design and Modeling's unit problem, an occupational therapist asks students to design a therapeutic toy for use with pediatric patients. Students are introduced to this final design challenge in the very first activity of design and modeling. Introducing the unit problem early on helps students understand the purpose of each lesson's learning objectives. Design and modeling incorporates Autodesk 1/2/3D design software to allow students quick access to computer-aided design skills in this nine-week course. This fully functional program gives students experience with solid modeling skills that can be applied in various CAD environments. 1/2/3D design's easy-to-use interface allows students ample time to learn solid modeling techniques and explore additional types of models. As part of structuring Design and Modeling's lessons to improve the scaffolding of concepts, the Puzzle Cube project from PLTW's Introduction to Engineering Design High School course has been redesigned for middle school students. In the Puzzle Cube design challenge, students demonstrate their design and solid modeling skills with 1/2/3D design as a culminating project in Lesson 2. The curriculum also provides opportunities for Puzzle Cube prototyping as students engage in the design process.
Do you want to show the kid part?
I see smiles, so that, that means that, that's part of it.
I'm going to finish my story for one minute. So anyway, so what I, I come from a school that has lots of different, 111 different languages, 350 kids, so a high immigrant refugee population in the Portland area. And I come from a language background as well, speaking, having different languages presented. And what, I didn't know anything about Project Lead the Way. I've become a leader in the, at the school, administrator of the school, and noticed within a very short period of time that the language acquisition being so much higher than anything that I had been around before, because the kids are actively involved and learning language at a higher level. It's not, it's not a seventh grader having to go and read, and what often happens feels like a kindergartner book, you know, the cat chased the mouse. They're actually learning the language at a level that is, which is more advanced, actually, than most seventh graders, because they're talking about 3D design, they're talking about algorithms, they're, they're learning language at the level of their peers. And one thing, as being a language person, is sometimes you can, oftentimes, you have higher-level thinking in your, in your home language, and it's hard to articulate it out. So you may, you may know exactly what's going on, and that's often why kids who can't speak English do extremely well in math, because it's a different language, or computers, because it really is something different. So I just wanted to express that as I was filling, but also with your, your, we were talking about the language acquisition and writing and speaking and all the different avenues, that this is going to be a surprise part, I guess the A, if we added the STEAM or the STEM, is, will be very exciting to see.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Michelle Lewis, Vice Principal at the high school and CTE Administrator. I'm going to tell you what's going on at the high school with Project Lead the Way. We've had it now for seven or eight years. We've been using it in our engineering program. First, I want to talk about a little bit of the research that's been done on Project Lead the Way. Studies have shown that Project Lead the Way contributes to a strong positive impact on math and science achievement. Project Lead the Way has a positive influence on students' career interest. There's a high likelihood that the students will continue their education to post-secondary. Project Lead the Way offers a pathway to prepare and motivate students to enter careers in science and engineering, which we know that there are going to be lots of careers in, dealing with science and engineering in the future. Project Lead the Way high school graduates are nearly three times as likely to major in something STEM-related when they do go to college. And in Texas, they found that students in Project Lead the Way programs scored much higher on the, on the state mathematics assessments. What we know about Project Lead the Way at the high school, and this is so true, it's relevant, Shalish talked a little bit about that, it's inspiring, it's engaging, it's absolutely amazing. And I, I would really like any of you to come and watch what's going on at the high school in our, in our engineering program. The learning is hands-on, it's real-world problem-solving, lots of open-ended problems, project-based learning, problem-based learning. Students are learning the engineering design process. One of the biggest things that I've noticed and is very, very positive is students working together in teams, and really learning to respect one another's opinion and help, help each other. You see students helping each other all the time. Want to talk a little bit about the professional development that goes with Project Lead the Way. For the high school, we send our teachers to a two-week, very intense training. And in that two-week period of time, they cover everything that's going to be covered in a year-long course. They start early in the morning, and they don't go to bed till late at night, and they go through the weekends. It's a solid two-week training. These trainings are offered by colleges and universities throughout the country, and they, they are just absolutely excellent. The curriculum is constantly reviewed by business and industry, by educators, by administrators to, to make sure that it is up to par with, with what's going on in the real world. Whoops, sorry. And it follows a continuous improvement model. So I want to just kind of describe to you what it looks like at the high school. Our courses are year-long courses. So a student would start as a freshman or a sophomore with Introduction to Engineering Design, where they learn to dig deep into the design process, apply math, science, and engineering standards to hands-on projects, like designing a new toy or improving an existing product. Students develop skill in technical representation and documentation of design solutions, and they use current 3D design and modeling software to represent and communicate solutions. In addition, the development of computational methods that are commonly used in engineering problem-solving, including statistical analysis, which we talked about a few minutes ago, and mathematical modeling are emphasized. Students also earn their OSHA 10-hour card in that first-year class. The second class is a year-long course again. It's called Principles of Engineering, where students explore a broad range of engineering topics, including mechanisms, strength of structure, materials, and automation, and then they apply what they know to take on challenges. So you can walk in that classroom any day, and you might see a hydrogen car race going across the floors. You might see drones flying around, Rube Goldberg contraptions that are opening cabinet doors or turning on switches. You might see trebuchets catapulting ping-pong balls across the room. You never know what you're going to see, and everything is project-based, everything is built by teams of students. For the third year at Carson High, right now, students have the opportunity to take civil engineering and architecture, where students learn the important aspects of building and site design and development, and then apply what they know to commercial building. This course is a perfect precursor course for students that want to go into the construction management program at WNC, their senior year through the Jump Start program. This next year, if all goes well, we'd like to start computer-integrated manufacturing, where students discover and explore the manufacturing processes, product design, robotics, and automation, and then they apply what they've learned to design solutions for real-world manufacturing problems. Students may choose to take the Automated Industrial Technology Certificate Program at WNC as a senior year through the Jump Start program, or they might decide to go into the Machine Tool Technology Program at WNC after they graduate from high school. We'll talk about costs a little bit. We are very fortunate in our state that our legislature has committed generous funding to our career and technical education programs. So every year, we get a state grant called an allocation, an allocation grant that comes to our district. And with those funds, we would purchase any consumables, any supplies, materials that need to be purchased every year. We will continue to use state CTE competitive funds to, for startup, for getting the program started, sending the teachers to that first round of training. And then if more training is needed in the future, and we already have the program in place, we would use our Perkins Federal Funds or our state, our state allocation funds. So I hope, if there's any more questions, but I'd really love to have you come and visit our programs.
Michelle, what you've done in the last seven years is truly amazing. The change, change for the better of the kids and, and for our businesses beyond. Students come out with value, and they're immediately valuable to other businesses. Now let me just ask, that aside, the software that is used, that you mentioned, the 3D software for the design and development of a product, is that SolidWorks? Is, is that the software?
They're using, we do have SolidWorks at the high school.
Mike, please.
Sorry, Michelle Lewis. We do have SolidWorks at the high school, but they use Autodesk for most of the Project Lead the Way programs. Did I answer that correctly?
Is that a software program that's used in manufacturers around this area?
Yes, it is. And SolidWorks is as well.
You know, I mean, I just want to say, when I was at Seelager and even at Carson Middle School, you know, one of our resources with civil engineering was Trusty Cassiope.
Right.
And, I mean, I can't tell you how many classes, including my own, over the years, that he came in and talked about bridges and future cities, and, and I think it's tremendous to have the opportunity for kids to apply some of this philosophy or this knowledge they gain and actually try it out. And so I think that's exciting and something that I wish, as a teacher, I had back then, so.
And it would have saved my parents a year of college, by finding I didn't have any talent in the engineering field.
Any other questions or, Laurel?
Yeah, I just have a comment, just on the committee selection. I noticed that your two parent representatives, the one for the middle school and one for the high school, are also administrators in our district. And I know that they're qualified. It just concerns me a little bit that they're also employees working under their supervisors in approving this, and it seems like maybe we should try, I don't know if it concerns, I don't think it concerns me enough to say start over, because it doesn't, but I, I just feel like maybe when we are looking for parents, we can make sure that we get that outside input that I think is the intent of requiring a parent to be on there. Because when everyone on the committee is an employee of the district, it, it could be, I don't know, it just looks like it could be more transparent if we had actual outside parents in there. Even though I know they're parents, and I know they're qualified and, and good people, but, eh, just kind of looks a little.
So Candy Rec, Rec for the record. We, there was an attempt, a reach-out attempt, to have other parents participate. Some of the struggles are our time, our timeline was short. Another struggle we have is that it was very helpful for Mr. Farnworth to be a member of the committee because he understands the standards process. Part of the review of the curriculum is the alignment of the standards with the actual curriculum. So as we looked at it, we realized there were actually five different content bands that were being addressed by Project Lead the Way, and for a parent to come in outside of a curriculum situation was difficult. There were some discussions had with parents who did not want to be a formal part of the committee because of the time constraint, but their students are in Introduction to Engineering Design. And I did have conversations with those parents about how their students felt about the programs, if they felt challenged, if they were engaged, and so we engaged them in a, in a less formal process, but it's difficult. I understand what you're saying.
And I understand that.
And I've served on that when I wasn't on school board, being a parent, but I think that's an important aspect, because we're not educators. And to be able, to be able to look at the, the books and the, the stuff that comes through to actually understand it, not to say that put it at our level, but I think it's real important, as a parent, to be able to understand, even though we don't know the standards, we don't care about standards, we just want our kids to be able to read and write, but I think it's, that's an important voice that, and why we set up the committees that way. And I understand that the time commitment was tough, but I, I had the same concerns when I, I saw that.
Well, reading and listening to your presentation, these are all transferable skills that these kids are getting, which is important today. Now, I know there's probably some comments from the audience, but, but Mike, should we take a motion, or do we, it's an action item? And then call for public comment? Okay, if there's no other comment, I, I mean, I'm, for me, I'm sold on what, this is all good stuff. I mean, it goes back from where we started 78 years ago, on project-based learning curriculum that matters. You know, the, the world is changing quickly today, and, and this is part of it, so. I'll entertain a motion.
I move that the Carson City School District Board of Trustees approve the recommended adoption as proposed by the committee, and to adopt the 2018 Grade 6 through 12 Science, Technology, Engineering, and Math STEM materials for the Carson City School District, as budgeted as presented to us this evening.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Before we take a vote on the, on the motion, any public comment? Mr. Bacon?
Thank you, Mr. Skorsak. For the record, Ray Bacon, Nevada Manufacturers Association, I go back with Project Lead the Way about 20 years. I discovered it at a conference in the East Coast, tried to bring it to the state. At that point in time, there was Project Lead the Way in 43 states. By the time we got off our duff, which was six more years, all 49, 49 other states in the DC district had it. So we were, again, really close to last. So let me kind of expand a little bit. My introduction to Project Lead the Way on a practical basis was Judy D'Amico, who was kind of their boss, she's the VP of Partnerships. If you go into the projectleadtheway.org website, you will see a section on there for partnerships. You take a look at the corporations involved in those places, in those companies. Those companies have internships, and they hire directly from kids. They provide scholarships to colleges that go through. The Project Lead the Way partners, that Top Line Group and things like that, those basically are people that are throwing about $10 million bucks a year into the program. These are major corporations, they don't throw around $10 million lightly, they take it very seriously. So that kind of gives you a level. It started at Rensselaer Polytech in upstate New York with a cooperation with GE. MIT found, or MIT found out that they were doing it and said, wait a second, we want part of the thing. So MIT was involved in the thing relatively early on. There's one RPI graduate that probably most of you know, his name is Charlie Hutter, CEO of Clickbond, or the retiring CEO of Clickbond. Once we got a little bit deeper into the thing, we took a Cherry White, I think most of you know, Cherry White and myself took a trip down to Rockland, California, and watched a little high school down there that does a pretty amazing job, and I know these two have both been there. That had the engineering program and the medical science program. I'm going to give you the pitch for the expanding this thing in the future. If you take a look at where the careers are in this state, manufacturing last year expanded 13.7%. That is, they were number one in the, in the country at this stage in the game, about 6,100 jobs, new jobs in manufacturing. Now, since the recession, we lost 24.5% of the manufacturing jobs in the recession. All those people who made building products, those, those companies are gone, they're probably not coming back. We'd been struggling along, gaining 100, 200 jobs a year, and then all of a sudden, last year, went on fire. If you take a look at the curve that shows up on the Dieter-- If you take a look at the curve that shows up on the Dieter charts, it's got an angle about like that. And they think it's going to crown out at some point in time. That depends on what Google does, what, you know, everybody else that's out there does and things like that. Depends on what happens in the rest of the state, depends on what happens at Apex in the South. I'm not sure it's going to slow down. Everybody that goes to the PLTW Engineering Program is qualified to work in those jobs. They may decide to get an engineering degree first, or they may decide to go directly to work. That's okay, doesn't matter. They're certainly qualified in another couple of months, they can get through the TMCC program or what Emily does at Western, and they can go to work at Panasonic or Tesla. And that gets them started at about 32K a year, which is not bad for straight out of high school, plus three or four months. So that kind of gives you the practical application. PLTW also has two relatively new courses. One was information technology, because computers are not going to be going away anytime soon, much as some days I'd like to throw mine in the trash can because it crashed four times this morning before nine o'clock. But they're not going to go away, and we all know that they're not going to go away. We're right on the edge of another industrial revolution, and that's the digital industrial revolution, because digital is taking over more and more of what everything that we do does. So that's going to be in play. That's a program that you may want to consider in the future. It fits nicely, and you wind up with a situation where the engineering students may want to do part of both or part of one, or they can jump back and forth or do other things. There's another one that starts in the fall, which is in cyber technology. I'm just guessing that with a little company called Blockchains that just bought 47,000 acres out at the trick, that there's probably going to be some jobs in that area. I'm going to guess that that's a little bit of a tax play. They're going to, their piece is 150 acres for their world corporate headquarters. I think they're going to take over the job that Lance has done as far as selling that thing, and with the tax change, there's some reasons why they did that. The graduation rates for PLTW students across the country is well in excess of 95%. In some states, in some schools, it's 100%. It has a very, very mixed bag. It is in schools of high poverty, and that's, it still keeps those graduation rates up. It still keeps the high percentage of going to college. It still keeps a reasonable high percentage going on into the military. So it's a program that works, it's got a proven track record. There's now a program down into the elementary schools for PLTW. So you can move forward as far as you want to go with this thing at some point in time. Abstract versus project learning that Ron talked about, and I think this is a really key issue. We have demonstrated proof time and time again over the last 25 years that where kids get involved and they use the information that they're getting, that abstract technology, that abstract thing that we tend to teach no longer becomes an equation in an algebra class, it becomes a problem. And all of a sudden, when it's numbers and things and widgets and things like that, just magically the algebra needs to be there, so they just learn it just kind of automatically. The last thing that I'll leave you with is, is we've had this screaming issue in this country to get more and more kids into college and get more and more kids completing college. We know we're in last place. We know we're not going to fix that anytime soon. We have a very low percentage of our parents that are college graduates. You can't get that first generation up through when you don't have their parental support. The world of college is a whole new world for somebody that has zero experience at that. But the one thing that we do know, and we've known it now for about 40 years, is those kids that complete physics in high school have a better chance of graduating from college than anybody else. And everybody that goes through PLW, PLTW, whether it's in the medical one, or whether it's in the engineering one, or whether it's in the information system, effectively completes a physics course. So, questions, sir?
Mr. Bacon, you're always inspirational. Always love to see you. Any questions, comments from the board members? Okay, thank you, Mr. Bacon. If anyone else in the public would like to comment? Thank you all, thank you all so very much, Miss Kima and Michelle, Shelly. This is all great stuff, you know, just seeing this move forward. It's been a long time. It's been tough, so, thank you.
Thank you for your support.
Discussion and possible action to approve the adoption of the 2018 Advanced Placement, the A P High School Biology Science Materials for the Carson City School District as budgeted. And Sue, you're on again.
Tonight's Science Implementation Specialist Rod Butler and I are happy to present to you the selected material for A P Biology. The selection process followed the required N R S, NAC 390 requirements. There weren't any citizens that came forward to provide feedback on the chosen material during the public review portion of the selection process. Per year approval, this project is slated for State Board Approval April 26. The cost of the project is approximately $6,500 and is part of what you approved as far as our budget before I started embarking upon these adoptions in our curricular areas. Next, Mr. Butler will tell you why the Biology Text by McGraw-Hill was selected.
Good evening, Rod Butler. This process was really pretty simple. When you have one A P Biology teacher and one department head and one I S, it's, it's pretty easy for us to come to an agreement on the textbook adoption here. Julie Coop went through, she did a fabulous job. She actually took home, I think there was four different A P textbooks that came in, and she took them home and worked on them for a week at night, going through all the textbooks and resources that they came through. And she originally had a different one picked out that she really had in mind that she wanted to go with, but when she came across this one, she shifted and decided this was a better choice for our students. One of the concerns that she had with the other books, for the most part, was they're really reader intense, and we're making a move away from everything that you have to do and science has to be read and memorized. And so she made that shift also now with the A P course to looking more towards that project base, more of what the students can learn outside of just straight reading and memorization. And the other textbooks followed more of the traditional line. Timeline wise on it, we were scheduled to work through this, I think, until late April or May, but like I said, she wanted to actually get it to you guys as soon as she could, so she worked hard on it.
Questions, comments from the board? And right, we appreciate you sticking with the curriculum that matters and working on, you know, all of this, and it's not gone unnoticed, and it's tough to keep up this. But you've done a good job and you kept us pointing in a good direction. So I'll entertain a motion if there's no other comments.
I move that the Carson City School District Board of Trustees approve the recommended adoption as proposed by the committee and to adopt the 2018 Advanced Placement Materials for the Carson City School District as budgeted as presented to us this evening.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Foes? Motion carries.
Thank you for your support.
Okay, agenda number 10, Discussion and Possible Action to Approve the Adoption of the 2018 Grade 6 through 12 English Language Arts, the E L A Materials for the Carson City School District as budgeted. And Sue, you're on again.
With a lot of people.
Susan.
Adam, I thought we'd see you up here with the Project Lead the Way, so.
Susan Kima for the record, and Renee Cortez is passing out samples of the My Perspectives product that we are going to be presenting to you tonight. Cindy Mills, 6 through 12 English Language Arts Implementation Specialist led by, led both the middle school and high school committees, E L A committees, English Language Arts committees through their materials adoption process. Key players were Carson High School Department Chair Adam Watley and Carson Middle Department Chair Tiffany Rankin and Eagle Valley Middle School Department Chair Greg Spriggs, who's also with us this evening. My thanks go out to all of you and the committees that you led and the teachers that worked so hard to put this English Language Arts adoption together. I'd like to give a note to the board. K-12 English Language Arts was the next content on the docket for adoption when the recession hit. So the materials were last adopted for English Language Arts in 2003. So this is really kind of a special, special one, actually to me, because we were, I was about to do this, make that announcement, and then we really needed to pull back and work on, work on saving our staff and our budgets. So it's time. You can see how, how I think the teachers really embraced the process, and our team will talk about that in a little bit. For the record, the selection process followed N R S and NAC 390 requirements. There weren't any citizens that came in to provide feedback on the chosen material during the public review of the selection process. My Perspectives by Pearson is a chosen product. Clark County is also purchasing the same series. Therefore, we won't be needing to send this product after, pending tonight's approval, onto the State Board, because the State Board will, has already approved the middle school product in their January meeting and is on the consent agenda to be approved on Thursday, March 15th at their State Board meeting. We will be able to jump onto their contract. The cost of the projects is approximately $421,305.91. That's an estimate. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to Mrs. Mills and her team to tell you why materials titled My Perspectives from Pearson was selected.
Hi, member, Mr. President, members of the board. My name is Cynthia Mills and I am the E L A Implementation Specialist now for 6 through 12. I'm going to talk a little bit about the process, and then I'm going to defer it to the department chairs to go into more detail of why we selected the materials. We started very similar to what math and biology, or math and science did. We received the materials and we, we received them about October. So from October to February, we vetted the materials. We had an amazing group of teachers. Originally, we were going to split up the middle school and the high school, but it worked out that we could all get together and we could all meet, and it was awesome because we were all able to collaborate and really, we started with kind of a needs assessment conversation of, do we really need this? What do we want? What are we looking for? And then we scheduled presentations by the companies that we narrowed down. Mr. Watley then sent a survey out to all the teachers. There were 14 teachers on the committee. There was teachers from every single grade level, 6 through 12. There were special ed teachers from all three sites, English language learner teachers from all three sites. And then, of course, the department chairs, and I think we had even like three teachers of the year on this committee. So this is, yeah, this is great. So, so we had presentations in December and teachers filled out rubrics, again, conversations, looking at the materials at their sites. And then we decided that we needed a deeper dive into the material. So then we scheduled two hour deeper dives with each company. One day we subbed out, and then one day we worked after school. And it really, it was very close, but ultimately Pearson demonstrated that they could really differentiate for our students, not only in the materials that we received, but really the online platform. It was, it's a seamless, through our Google classroom that we use, through all the Google tools that we use, it's pretty seamless, the technology. And math had already gone through that process with the technology, so that kind of cleared the way there. So then I'd like to defer to the department chairs to go into a little bit deeper.
So trying to get my own children to decide on where to go for dinner is hard enough, but trying to get.
Hey, Adam, could you just state your name for the record?
My name is Adam Watley. I'm the department chair at Carson City High School. And getting my children together to decide what to have to dinner or where to go to dinner is challenging enough. Getting 14 people from two different schools, or sorry, three different schools, together to make a decision that's as large as this one and as important as this one was, kind of a significant undertaking. And to Cynthia's credit, called the vendors, got them all in, the teachers kind of went back and forth. The survey results said that two other vendors were the ones we wanted to go with. We interviewed those two vendors, were not completely satisfied with what they were offering, met again, and then had the other vendor, the one that we're now going with, meet a third time with us. So it's been, it's been a long and arduous process. I'll tell you that it's a process I'm incredibly grateful for. You know, over the last 12, 13, 14 years, we've used most of the L A D budget just to try to maintain purchasing novels year to year as a hodgepodge of, you know, just trying to be in survival mode with very old materials. So I'm grateful to have the opportunity to have updated materials that were made after the iPhone was created. So I'm grateful for that. We selected this distributor because they had both a digital and text platform. The interface, both on the student side and the teacher side, was very user friendly, so students have the ability to use their Chromebooks from the one-to-one adoption that I assume you guys approved a few years ago. And on the teacher interface, it was easy for teachers to understand with, I'm sure, as Greg will attest, various levels of technological ability and disability. It also had SPED and E L L, both are representatives from there, for English language learners, felt that there were materials that allowed them to differentiate curriculum appropriately. And it comes with, one thing that all teachers felt was lacking in our current curriculum, which was assistance in grammar, a major section of the A C T exam that 11th graders take, is the English section, and we're getting killed there. And so this is going to really help because it allows teachers to assess where the students are at, and then the students get individualized learning in the areas they don't understand, rather than me teaching every student a specific element of grammar and having half of them already know it, and half of them have no knowledge of it. It can individualize that instruction for them in a digital platform. It was also stated that they can hone in on certain skills, and that by comparison, the other vendors didn't offer as comprehensive of modules of learning. The nice part about this was that the online platform is strong, but the text version is strong as well. Some teachers are much more comfortable, myself included, with the online version, but some other teachers also need that, that thing, that textbook, to refer to, right? So they can, they can touch the line and they can see the idea. So it was a nice balance of meeting our various needs.
Greg? Okay. And my name is Greg Spriggs. I'm actually the Eagle Valley Department Chair. And I just wanted to tell you about our team first. So the team that we actually brought in was, I teach 6th grade and 7th grade. We have another teacher, Mary Hunter, who teaches 7th and 8th. We have Thomas Chandler, who teaches our E S L curriculum. And then we also have Mrs. McDowell, who has also taught English at our school as well as now our special ed person. So at this point, I thought that was the best group for middle school to actually test the field with Pearson. And when we got to this platform, we actually looked at all the elements. Is this good for E S L? Is this good for SPED? Is this good for our lower kids as well as our higher kids? And it did match. And what really, really showed with that was all the elements online, because we are using these Chromebooks, we're actually connecting a lot more with the technology. There are actually assessments on there that we can give right at the beginning of the year that will actually monitor where these kids are struggling and where these kids do well. And then every single unit, we actually have tutorial lessons in grammar. We actually have extra assignments too, that will also really, really improve their skills. skills in grammar, reading and writing. And I actually just looked through the book today a little bit more, and we have different topics. We have nonfiction narrative. We have informational explanatory. We have argumentative, and we also have just regular narrative. So what this curriculum does, it actually stitches all those different types of writing elements together with the reading, with the vocab, and the grammar. And as you can see in some of these curriculums, we have different types. So we actually start off with a direct instruction type model. Then we actually go into smaller groups depending on where their reading level abilities are at. And then it goes into an individual-based platform. And throughout each unit, we do have performance tasks where we do measure each of those little components as well, through their writing ability.
It's all refreshing just to hear this. Adam, you mentioned grammar, and we're mentioning, you know, the reading component, you know, reading for understanding and writing for clarity of thought, no matter what venue, and it seems like we finally arrived. It's been a long time. But that clarity of thought, and you mentioned the ACT, horrible. And you go, why? And, and I think you just presented why. So, anyway, I, I think it's great that you took the time, and we're doing it right. So thank you for that.
Just, just a question for clarification. With it being digital, is there audio access for the short stories, the, the plays, anything that is reading for students who may be visually impaired, or students who may be EL learners who hear better than they can read and can gain comprehension through audiobooks? Is, is, is that one of the, because I saw that you marked that it makes, that it meets those needs. Is that something that's there with all the material?
From what I've seen, it actually does. We do have a lot of selections. If you actually highlight a selection, it'll actually read it to you. We also have a lot of the visual stuff online, actually all the readings online, too, a lot of the selections, and those will also read it. So it's a very good scaffold for those that are actually trying to pick up the language for ESLs, and also for this, um, special ed population, too. It really does support that.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Well, you know, I need some help myself here, you know, you've got to turn a button on. But it is, you know, two different schools, three different schools, the combination of teachers, but it all came out pretty solid, huh? So that was great. So thank you for that. With that, I'll entertain a motion.
I move that the Carson City School District Board of Trustees approve the recommended adoption as proposed by the committee, and to adopt the 2018 Grade 6 through 12 English Language Arts ELA materials for the Carson City School District as budgeted, as presented to us this evening.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Now comments from the public. Seeing none, all, all in favor? opposed? And motion carries. Again, thank you very much for all the work you put in. Moving on to agenda item number.
You were too far away.
Agenda item number 11, and that's the discussion review for possible amendment. Board bylaws 040, membership 041, code of conduct for trustees, and O and 070. And it's the duty of officers. And this is the first reading for discussion only. And I see it's me. We'll first go to bylaw number 040, membership. And most of this, or a lot of this, has to do with taking out he or she, or S and he. So there's some, some cleanup, but the board trustees will, shall consist of seven members, and it goes through. And as you read through 040, was there anything in here that you saw that should not be in? We've added, you know, under D, each trustee shall complete such training and provide certification of completion thereof as required by laws. Is there anything that stands out? Changes, additions, deletions?
Just one thing that I noticed, under Section 2A, where it says trustees shall be qualified electors and possess qualifications of residence within the county school district. I'm wondering if we shouldn't include and voting district for the office for which they seek election? Because in Section 6, on the second page, that's the language that they use whenever a member of the board shall cease to be a bona fide resident of the county or voting district. Because we are divided up into voting districts, we each represent a district, I just thought maybe we should include and voting district in there.
Makes sense. Legal counsel?
I agree.
Any other changes, additions, deletions? And should we vote in these separately, or we're not voting? Excuse me, we're just, we're just discussing. Okay. Let's go to 041, code of conduct for trustees.
If I can go ahead?
Go ahead.
I just noticed in the first paragraph, right after the second bold, board of trustees, we have trustees, again, that needs to be deleted. And, and then looking at the back on the new section that we added under Section 4H, that section four refers to board of trustees should meet responsibilities to the community. But I'm also wondering whether or not that would apply more under Section 1, if we moved the H to 1, because that is a member of the board of trustees should honor the responsibility which membership demands by, because that is a statutory requirement, and maybe that's a membership demands, rather than a responsibility to the community? I'm, I'm not sure. I, it, just a thought.
No, makes sense. And again, Mike?
I, I think it could fit easily under Section 1 as well.
Okay. Go ahead, Stacy.
You could probably keep it there in Section 4, too. Keep them in both places. Because I think we had that discussion last meeting, or maybe not, but, because it is one of the responsibilities, I mean, the community does vote us in, so it's, it's kind of our responsibility as we take on this job. So I'd like to keep it in both places, if nobody cares.
So you'd like to say it twice?
I, I think so. I don't think it does any harm. I think it just strengthens it.
I, I don't know, because each one is a different one. So.
Okay, so you could take it out.
Well, if you think it's fine under, I think it's fine under there, just I was wondering, is it more of a responsibility of membership, or is it a response? It's both.
You're probably right. It's probably more of a responsibility of membership. So, yeah, just move it to membership. That makes more sense.
I'm not, I'm not like so totally on that. It just was an idea, but.
Whatever.
Mike?
I put it in Section 4, but I see the logic in putting it in Section 1. If the board would like it, move to Section 1. That's fine with me. I, I don't think you need it in both places.
Comments, concerns on that issue from board members? If not, let's move to Section 1 without objection. 070, duties of officers. And here, I think it has a lot to do with the clerk. So Mr. Walker, any concerns with this?
I do have a question. So, I mean, I think that number one, we're in a little bit of an interesting situation because of Stacy's role. So usually Stacy's kind of informing us of the upcoming trainings and other opportunities. But one of the things I'm wondering about is it does say that these trainings are supposed to be on the first and third year of your term. So, but as I'm reading this, it looks like we, each year, we have to post training on the website. So do we want to stipulate that, or just leave it in general?
You could state it, but if you went to the NRS, Chapter 386 is where it says first and third year. But, I mean, if you wanted to state it, you could. I think, Mike?
And I don't mind either way. I just, for my own purposes, was trying to clarify for myself, actually, so.
So I, I mean, I guess I'm just thinking about the statute and how it is. It requires each individual board member to receive the training during the first and third year, and we all alternate. So I think it also requires the posting on the website annually of, of who didn't complete their first or, you know what I mean? I don't think.
Well, we're staggered, so. So my first year was Stacy's third year. You know what I mean? So the way we're staggered.
But then you would be in compliance. So you wouldn't be posted annually as noncompliance. It would only be someone who was in their first or third year who was, I, I think the statute would require us to post it annually who is not in compliance. But if you didn't need to get the training during your second and fourth year, you wouldn't be noncompliant. But it would only be, but we still would have to post each year because somebody's going to be in their first or third year every year.
So this year, everybody's in their second or fourth year of their term. And so do we just repost what?
Yeah.
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 So, I mean, we're staggered, so that when it's our first year, it was our, you, Joe, and I, it was our first year, and Dawn, and then everybody else was in their third year last year.
So it's not every year.
So that, in my mind, that's what I was trying to clarify.
We'll, we'll clarify that. I would just mention, or note in that, that first paragraph under Section 1, in the second sentence, where it says he, she shall appoint, why don't we just say the president shall appoint? The rest of the time, we, we talk about the president.
Yeah.
Any other comments, questions, concerns? If not, we'll be bringing this back at the next board meeting for possible action. Moving on to agenda item 12. Presentation and discussion of tentative budget scenarios and assumptions for fiscal year 2018 and 2019. And AJ, you're on.
Thank you, President Zorzak, trustees. Thanks for having me back. AJ Peeling for the record. So I know you're going to be surprised, I have a PowerPoint for you with a lot of numbers. So.
Before nine o'clock.
It is before nine o'clock, so that should certainly help.
Very big, and in black letters.
Yes. As much as possible. I, I really, I spent extra time trying to enlarge the font sizes as much as possible, so I, I don't want Dr. Dolphin to strain too much.
Five glasses, Tony.
Okay, good. Thank you. So some of this is kind of like the budget assumptions I present every year. It's just a broad overview of some of the revenues and kind of general expectations. There's a couple changes just based on some of the things that have come up over the last year, to specifically point those out to you and show you the impact. Just to be sure we're all clear on that before we get too far in the process. And just, I guess as a starting point, too, if you remember, the third Wednesday in May is when we get together to have the budget hearing, where, where the, the final budget is, is presented to you, has to be submitted to the Department of Taxation by June 8th. So that's about two months away before that. At the first meeting in April, I'll be presenting the tentative budget, which is kind of the, supposed to be the first kind of official look for the board at the budget. And that's something for, that's only for discussion, but for you to make comment on, I can go back and make adjustments as necessary. So. Sorry. Okay, so last year, I started with one of my favorite quotes from Donald Rumsfeld about known unknowns and unknown unknowns and that sort of thing, and I didn't leave the quote up this time. But fortunately, we're not in a legislative year, so that does make things a little bit easier. You never know what is going to come up, but it's certainly not what seems to be a bit of a crapshoot with what comes out of the legislature every two years. What we are still waiting for, Department of Taxation, they've actually sent us some preliminary numbers, but we're still waiting for final projections on ad valorem property tax revenues, local school support tax, government services tax. I'll tell you, and you'll see that a little bit later, that property tax assessed values are up in Carson City about 4.4%. Because of the tax abatement laws, we don't reap the full benefit of that. It's limited essentially to around 3%. There's some exceptions to that, but for the most part, we consider it a 3% cap. Local school support tax is expected to be up 12.1%, which is, the, the last three years, we have just seen some enormous jumps. Government services tax, which is formerly known as the motor vehicle privilege tax, is up about 13.6% in preliminary estimates. So to me, that LSST and GST, those are the two kind of bellwethers for how the economy's doing, and apparently it's booming, because are, at least just really coming back strong. So that, those are good to see, and hopefully it continues. Looking at the actual per pupil amount itself, while in Senate Bill 544, we do have a per pupil amount in there for fiscal 19, it actually can change based on the ad valorem taxes that are being collected in the area. So the Department of Taxation, I think it is in June, or no, I'm sorry, I think it's in May, they'll come back and give us a revised number. It's usually not a, a large change, if at all. Last year, or two years ago, we didn't have a change. Two years prior to that, it was a change of $1. So I, I don't expect anything significant, but it's just something to be aware of. I may come back with 71.94, or something like that. Okay, moving on. A couple other things. Enrollment, obviously, we've talked about this many times over the past two years, and you know there's a lot going on, and it just amazes me every day when I drive over by John Manikins Park, and there's a little shop of 31 homes just going up really quickly over there, and Schultz Ranch, so there's a lot going on. And now, of course, by Carson High, we have trucks bringing in equipment and dirt pretty soon, so things are starting to happen. Class size reduction, so I, I feel like an idiot sometimes when I come to you, because I feel like there's these really concerning items where we're going to lose a significant amount of money, and then it doesn't come to pass, and then there's another one, and it doesn't come to pass. And then I think we're going to get a whole bunch of money, and then it doesn't come to pass. So I apologize for, for that. But about six, five or six months ago, we were told at a meeting that the, there's two different class size reduction plans. There's the traditional and the alternative. We use the alternative, as most rural districts do. They were going to basically change how they calculate the funding, which we would have lost about $1.5 million, which directly impacts the general fund. So it was just another one of those scenarios, and I, I've learned enough now, at least not to get too far out of myself with those types of things. And it, it seems, my understanding now is that we won't, they aren't going to do what they thought they were going to do. So I'm not expecting that anymore, but still, it's not for sure, so I'm still waiting to learn a little bit more about that. For special education funding, as you know, they went to a weighted factor based For special education funding, as you know, they went to a weighted factor based off the per pupil amount. It's, we don't know what that factor is, but it's not a true factor anyway, because it's backed into, the legislature says, here's how money, how much money we're going to give to special education. And then they look at how many kids are in the state, and they kind of back into what this is. And so it's not, it's not truly a per pupil factor, but they, they do come up with one for us to make it look like it is, I guess. So, that's that. Moving on to some of the basic, basic assumptions, this, I guess, just represents more of the growth that we're projecting right now. I'll say, so, look, just looking at head count, this year, we're at 77.23. Next year, I have us at 77.96. So that's an increase of a little over 70 kids. Last year, we were, or, I'm sorry, this year over last year, we're up about 131 kids. So still expecting growth, not necessarily the, the, that jump. I'm kind of concerned if we have that jump again, because it's certainly taxing some of our, our middle schools, our middle school, I guess Carson Middle, really, that took the brunt of it. It's just strange, but anyway, so still expecting some growth, but, you know, hopefully steady rather than fits and starts over time. When you take those head counts and you bring it down to awaited enrollment, and remember now, kindergarteners are 1.0. It's only our students that are in pre-K that qualify for special education services, or what we call the early childhood program, that are 0.6. So that's why these numbers used to be a lot, there used to be a great separation between them, because the kindergarteners, now they're relatively closer. Then from, from that, try to extrapolate out, over, over an entire school year, we tend to lose some kids. So what does that look like on average over time? And so even though normally, in years past, we would have had a count day weighted enrollment of 77.68 for next year, I would actually estimate us to get about 77.25, and, and that's the number that matters for funding. But it takes into account that we do lose some students over time, although it's, it's gotten a lot better in the, the last several years of, that we've been looking at this. Any questions so far?
Did you include or account for the possibility of what was formerly Silver State Charter School not, not having the charter removed, I mean, the impact of what those kids would be?
Sure. I, I have not. And so based on what we get in our funding reports from NDE, there's some, there's 59.6, so basically say 60 kids that are in the Carson City residential area that attend Silver State, all at the, the high school level. So at least, as far as the impact it would have on, on the elementaries, it certainly wouldn't. Middle school, I don't think, because I think it is only 912 now. I, I was going to look back and check on that. But the high school, I don't, yeah. So Carson High and Pioneer would take the brunt of that. A lot of their kids, I think, do online programs, too, so if they would come our way, maybe Carson Online would be a, a good opportunity for them. Okay. So this just looks at historical enrollment. The blue line is elementary. The red line is middle school. The green line is high school. So you can see over time where we've been, and then this is the total up here. So again, expecting some growth next year, but, you know, you go back to before the recession, and we were already well above that. So it's, it's, looking at this '09, '10 year, that was the first year, I think, from a funding standpoint, we really got hit where our per pupil started taking a dip. So the, the timing of that, you know, hopefully, with things kind of coming back, those numbers will come back, and it's got to find space for everybody, so.
AJ.
Yeah.
Would it be possible for us to get a copy of these slides, just so that as-
Oh, sure.
-these budget meetings come up, then we could kind of compare how the numbers are changing?
Yeah, absolutely. Okay. Okay. So this is the same, averagely ADE, averagely enrollment number from the previous slide, and here's the, this is the current years per pupil. Here's the next year per pupil that we believe we'll receive. And this is the difference in the, the DSA allowable revenue that, that we would be able to, to generate. So it's about another 1.2, a little over $1.2 million that we would generate from having some additional students and the extra per pupil amount. Special education aid, again, it, it's a, kind of a hard one to, to wrap a solid, I guess, a solid feel around, but when you look at how it's determined and how it appears that the factor will turn out, we would get a small bump next year, but it's not significant. One of the things I just, I wanted to point out with that is, in the last three years, our special education expenditures have exceeded 8% annually in, in increases, which is not sustainable when your funding is barely, you know, going, not even going up $100,000 for aid. So, and I should say, not sustainable in the sense that more and more has to come out of the general fund to cover that cost, which is, that is what's not sustainable in the long run.
Right. So what is coming out? We have $4 million coming in. How much do we have going out in special ed?
Right now, I, I think it's right around 11.6 million I have budgeted early on. There's still some tightening. I still, I still have some meetings with Jan Albertson to go over what her staffing needs are going to be, as is, as is Jose. But that, it, that is, you know, if I go back to 2014, we spent nine million, about $9 million. So we've gone from nine, and we went from nine, or, yeah, from nine to 10, to 10.6. This year, I think we're going to end up around 11.3. So it's just, just growing. So we need to, I mean, we need to try to take some steps to, to rein that in. At the same time, we don't have a lot of ability to do that because of federal laws, so.
Right. And I think those are the facts that some of these groups that are going to the legislature to change the funding formula would find very interesting, because those are total unfunded mandates from the federal level down to the state level. So I think those numbers are important.
Yeah.
And I think it's also important to remember that with special education, you could have a child with special needs move in with, you know, huge accommodations, that it's not like we could say, no, we don't have the money. That's not how it works.
Right. That's not an option.
Right.
Yeah. Sorry, it's not going to work this year. Yeah. So in, in the, the other thing, actually, I wanted to bring up, too, so we're, we're looking at, just to go back to this and looking at these per pupil amounts, at NDE, actually, we just had a meeting today for reviewing the equity allocation model, which distributes, kind of redistributes the base amount of funding to everybody. And again, like, two years ago, we were looking at this, and I remember talking with Mrs. Crossman about this, and, and Mr. Stokes when it was first coming up, that the per pupil amount, they, as reconfiguring the model, it was going to reduce our funding to like $67, $6800 per pupil. It didn't happen again, but this time, it, it's like deja vu all over again, except worse, and so the numbers that we're looking at are like $63 to $6600 per pupil. And so the, the difference, to, to give you an idea, this number of 55 million, we'd be talking about 48 to 51 million. So it's a really, really, really significant impact. But because it's not, it hasn't happened, you know, there's, it's just not quite there yet. It hasn't gone through the legislative session. I don't quite know what to make of that, except for concern and to keep an eye on it and be involved in that group. But I certainly, and I, I made a point today that they need to understand the, the catastrophic nature of that, and it's not just Carson, it's really all the smaller districts that get impacted, except for one. Even Washoe is impacted. So just something that, that's on the radar and continue to, to watch.
So projecting that that could happen, do we have a plan or a recommendation should, you know, something happens?
Sure. Not, not yet. One, one of the things we've been talking about, or brought up with, with Mr. Stokes is to start putting together something that is, you know, just some plan saying, you know, if, if we would lose X amount of dollars, what would we do? And maybe then another iteration of that, just to have some things in place. My hope is that the, it, it's based on the, the funding the state gave us two years ago, which is a lower amount than I would really expect them to hopefully give us another year from now. And maybe if enough money comes into the DSA pot to fund schools, it may in the end, you know, we might still end up with a little bit of a bump if, if the, if the legislature really goes all in on education. So we'll, we'll see what happens with that. Class size reduction, we're looking at reduced funding there. They, they've revised the formula. That's still in flux, because it seems like the formula, the calculation is being revised regularly right now, so I'm hoping that stabilizes to get a, a better number in the future. Like I said, government services tax, ad valorem taxes, local school support tax is all up. Local school support tax is one that, even though it's up, and I'm happy it's up, because it tells me the economy's doing well, we don't see any benefit from it, because we just get a reduction in state aid that offsets that. All of the revenues, just expecting a 1% increase. Loss to charter schools, this is actually something I, I also did not adjust for Silver State if, if that would, if that would change, so that'll be something here over the, of the coming months, we'll keep an eye on, and figure out what the impact of that is. Staffing, so looking at just base assumptions, when you're talking about all the changes across all funds, the, the steps that happen within our salary schedule, at about a $1.9 million impact. Health benefits are, are, I have them at a 5% increase. We have been incredibly fortunate the, since I've been here, and I'll take all the credit. But we have been really fortunate with our health costs, and what some districts are going through has just been amazed, or horrible, really, so. So that's, that's what we're working with. For non-staffing costs, as of right now, I don't have any increases to operating budgets built in. The, that, that may change as, as time goes on, but for right now, I just have everyone at, at where they were last year. A couple, a couple adjustments, the Cops and Schools grant, which we had the presentation on at the last joint meeting. Based on the information that Casey Otto, the Sheriff's Finance Officer, has given me, we originally had projected that the, the full, kind of fully onboarding that cost, our, our half of the cost would be about $270,000 a year. It looks like more around $230,000 based on the information he gave me, so that's, as of right now, I'll, I'll go back and verify with him again on updated payrolls, but that, I think, is going to be the number that we can run with to cover the costs of our SROs in the schools. This also may change, too, you know, with, obviously, with all the school safety concern. If anything, I don't know if anything would happen next year, or if it'd have to wait until the next legislative session, but maybe there would be some help from the state to help fund some of those, or even expand it beyond what we currently have. Instructional technology replacement cycle, so this has been in place for, I think this is a, this will be going into the third year now. The costs continue to increase, and that's always kind of been the stories, that at some point, you're going to get up close to $1 million a year to continually replace all the Chromebooks, all of the laptop devices, all of the smartboards in the district. And so there's kind of an assumed rate of replacement in the district that, that builds into that number.
So is there?
Yeah.
I mean, one of the things I wonder is, is there a more conservative way to recycle it out? So I mean, if the budget gets much tighter, I mean, that's quite a bit of money that, instead of replacing them in two or three years, maybe we aim for replacing them in five years, if possible.
Sure. And that, those are the kind of conversations, Raymond Maderos and I have had many meetings and conversations about this, and we're still in, in regular contact. The, the biggest change so far has been, because originally, these numbers, we were looking at one point, I think it was 1.2 to 1.3 million dollars a year, and the, the change we made there was, the assumption is we were always buying new Chromebooks for ninth grade, and they would go through, sixth grade and go through, and then at the elementary levels, we'd replace third, fourth, or fifth each year. So it was kind of a three-year rotation. But based on the level of usage, Raymond had the idea, and, and I, I liked it, it was that when the, the Chromebooks are done, because they have a four-year warranty, once they're done at the middle school and high school level, they've gone with that child all the way through, that we bring them back to the elementary level. So with that warranty, for the most part, they should be in good shape. And Raymond, this is the first year we did it, and he, he know, he knows that there were some issues with it, and kind of rolling that out the first time, and how, taking advantage of that warranty in certain circumstances, but altogether, we're fairly happy with that, and I think it'll get better over time. The, the usage out, the elementary school just isn't as intensive as it is at the high school. And I'll, I'll tell you as well, my, my fifth grader got one of those recycled Chromebooks, and he was pretty excited when he opened it up, and it was the Chromebook of Brian Sandoval, who was, who was the student that, that came here that had the governor's name. He was, he was buzzing about that for a while.
It was middle pages.
Yeah, right. So, and we already have 610,000 budgeted in this year, so it's, again, it's just a kind of an incremental jump up right now. The big, the big last piece to this is next year, the 20, Nevada Ready 21 Grant is probably going to go away, or at least the portion of it that funds our Chromebooks at the middle school level. So that's when we need to start taking on that obligation, and that's, that's really the last big piece that we have to figure out. And the operations department, so Mr. Kornick's department, they, they will have a significant budget decrease next year, but that's directly because of the energy savings projects we did, and the, the amount, basically, all of the savings that's supposed to occur are in his budget. So his budget gets reduced to then use that to make our payments over time, and he's, as much as he's excited about the outcome, he's not excited about that, and actually, I still have to break it to him how big that is, but. So all in all, revenues are up about 1.8 million from the previous year, with the expenditures including transfers, and that's to special education, class size reduction, nutrition fund. The, the deficit looks to be about $77,000. So that's, that's a, a better place than we've had in previous years, but, and, and so there's, there's more to this. One of the things I wanted to mention, just to put it on your radar, and I, I don't, I, I hope I'm not jinxing this by bringing it up too soon, but tracking the nutrition fund this year, you know, historically, we've always run a deficit in that fund, and the way things are going this year on the revenue side and the expense side, we, I, I think there's a reasonable chance we may actually break even in that fund. It'd be the first time in 20 years. So I don't, I, I don't hold me to it, but it's, it's tracking well. So as long as we finish strong, we should be in a good place. Yeah. Yeah. Okay, so 70, I have $77,000 now, and again, there's, there's still a lot of things coming in, a lot of things changing, so it's, it's early in this game. There's still other things not accounted for. So the, the salary piece I have accounted for in there is everyone getting their, their steps, but then we, within negotiations, there's obviously more to that. So the impact of negotiations not being settled is not wrapped up in there yet. The impact of curriculum purchases, so what I'm, what I'm making you aware of is that there are, there are really only two large curriculum adoptions left. I think, Mrs. Kim, if that's right, and it's the, the K5, ELA, and then K through 12, social studies. So obviously, large, large ones. So right now, I, I have $1 million up there. Mrs. Kim is still, is, is wrapping up, though, obviously, the one she brought to you today on the, she's created this curriculum schedule for me going on out, and those are the next two that, that are there. So those will be significant cost, significant costs. I have them in, in quotes as- have them in quotes as one time, and Mr. Walker, as you astutely pointed out last time, I said that it's not exactly one time, because we do renew them, but the idea being that it's not necessarily a cost for that specific curriculum every single year.
Are you projecting bringing that to the board this fiscal year, or is that, you're looking at possibly next year for those two items?
That would be next fiscal year's items.
So, as we, as that process really begins, and we start getting some better numbers, I'll, I'll bring those back to you. I don't know if the numbers will adjust much before May, but certainly, by the time we get to the December amended budget, we'd have a different number. It does not account for staff turnover, which, obviously, when, when veteran staff retire, that there's usually savings that comes with that. It also doesn't account for new staff FT, so we've had some pretty complex discussions with some of the schools, just based on the numbers we're seeing coming in, and how they're going to be able to accommodate for those staff, so there, there may be some additions in staff that we still need to include. Hopefully, that will, will offset whatever the saving, will be offset by the savings and turnover, but we're still trying to get creative, seeing what we can do with that. So, if you include the, the curriculum purchases, it's just an extra, it's an extra million dollars, so your $77,000 deficit goes to 1.77, but again, it's not, not, not expecting, actually looking at the, the schedule, Miss Kim has given me, there's not, there's not really much for large adoptions thereafter, so that curriculum dollar amount will very likely come down for what's needed for the next several years after, so that'll help, help in future, future fiscal years as well. And that is all I have. So, if you have any questions, happy to take them.
Questions? Mike? I would just say, nice job. I know that there's a lot of uncertainties, so I appreciate you keeping us informed, really.
Any legislative proposals in the works?
Yeah, yes. I'll tell you more later.
Okay, any questions in the audience, of our fiscal director? Approval of the consent agenda?
I move that the Carson City School District Board of Trustees approve the consent agenda as submitted.
Second?
Motion in a second. Any comments in the audience, public, hearing end, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. We know we've got Vander Anima coming up. Any concerns with spring break?
Wish I had it.
Request for future agenda topics? Okay, seeing none tonight, I'll have some for the next time, but there's none tonight. Go ahead, go to agenda item number 16, without objection, we're adjourned.